A long day ahead of myself.
Breathe, everyone, just breathe. Be present.
Everybody have extra boxes. Ready? Morning, everyone. Uh, we're gonna bring the Montgomery County Planning Commission meeting for March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four to order. Uh, left the record show, we did do our quarts. And we are leading three members, but I believe Obed will be absent today. And Bob, who should be here momentarily, um, and I assume Nicole will be here at some point, so, so. Um, with that, I just wanna open it up to board comments. Any word comments? Sorry, I had one comment. Um, I wanted to, uh, two weeks ago, two weeks ago, I sat on a panel in Harrisburg, for the Office of Transformation and Opportunity. Um, and discuss permit reform in state as it relates to, county and local governments. Um, and I wanted to thank John for spending time with me on the phone, uh, Drew, and also, uh, Matt Edmund to discuss various, um, permanent processes that they, uh, get involved in. I would also Bob, who I spoke about about, you know, things related to social media. So I want to thank them for all the time they spent with the panel so that I could, uh, present and represent some of the, uh, issues that we find in the local government. So, thank you for doing this. Any other, uh, board comments? Morning, Nicole.
Morning.
Have a quick announcement. Uh, right today at eleven AM, got notice that there will be a fire alarm test. No evacuation is needed. However, they did say there will be, uh, horns and strobe lights. You'd be, uh, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what warning to give you, but it's kind of.
Aren't there? Right behind you.
So Robert, maybe we could mute.
Okay. Alright, without any word comments, we're gonna move on to approval of the minutes. And Karina was so kind to let me know that we did not approve minutes for the last two months. So we need to take care of both of those.
I noticed.
We did not have a form at the beginning of the last meeting, so we held off. So we will, uh, we will attempt to do that now since we clearly have a farm. So first is, do I have a motion to approve the Montgomery County Planning Commission, regular monthly board meeting minutes of January tenth and February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four?
I can do January, can't do February.
As well. So why don't we just have Dulce move for both? I'll second for both and Jonathan will second for both. Are there any comments or corrections on the January meeting minutes? Or the February meetings? Seeing none, um, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Um, next up is public comments. Do we have any comment from public or staff? Morning. Uh, public or staff, anybody online? Morning to maybe comment before we start on the agenda.
Do we have any public? Online at all?
Seeing no comments, we will move on to our first, uh, agenda item, which is the two thousand twenty-three median pricing for housing. And it wouldn't be a meeting without Ann. Morning, Ann.
Alright, so, I hope that you weren't expecting good news with my presentation this morning.
What was that?
I hope you weren't expecting good news, like I was gonna come up here and say, I fixed all of the county's affordability woes because I haven't.
We were, we were hoping, hoping.
A musical. Uh, I'll, I'll keep that in mind. I know you like Green Day, so maybe I can do it in the vein of some.
Well, if you do that, then that would be impressive.
Or something like that. Alright, so median housing sale prices for two thousand twenty-three, um, some good, some bad, but overall, uh, the, uh, the housing market is still kind of constrained. Uh, we've, we saw fewer sales in two thousand twenty-three and higher prices. Um, we had a median sales price overall of four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. That's up twenty-five thousand dollars from the sale prices in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, new home sale prices went down the tiniest bit, uh, about five percent from two thousand twenty-two. So in two thousand twenty-three, median price for a newly built home was just under six hundred fifty thousand dollars. Existing home prices, which make up the majority of home sales each year, uh, did go up in median price. That went up to four hundred thousand dollars, an increase of about four percent from the prior year. And in terms of housing types, when we look at the sale prices overall for detached, attached and multifamily home prices, they all went up to, um, multifamily homes, you know, an apartment complex type of home, uh, went up the highest percent, but also had the smallest number of units sold. Most of the new apartments that are being built here are for rent. So the, the number of sales that I have to analyze are pretty small. Uh, so in a little bit more detail, uh, so here we have a chart comparing two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. All units overall, you can see that the home price went up from four hundred thousand to four hundred twenty-five thousand. And when we adjust for inflation, you can see that even when I go back ten years and adjust the home sale prices to twenty twenty-three dollars, that the price for homes is still outpacing, um, the price of the, you know, the increase in inflation. By type, you can see that overall, everything continues to go up and up, um, and number of units sold, um, the, the orange line on the top is all unit, all the housing types overall. The number of units, um, continues to, to drop. Um, just, it's too expensive to sell a home and too expensive to buy a home. So until something outside of my control changes, uh, it's gonna continue to look like this. Uh, in terms of new units, again, I mentioned that all of those prices went down the tiniest bit. Uh, so the median price for all types and detached and attached homes went down slightly. There were no new multifamily units that sold in two thousand twenty-two or twenty-three.
Yeah, do you have a, do you have a sense of days on market for changes between the average days on market for a home?
Now, you did not, I did not write that down. My understanding is that it continues to be low. Um, that, that the, uh, supply, you know, the number of months supply that we have units for sale is low and the number of days on the market is low.
So there's still demand, it's not as much on the market.
There's absolutely demand outpacing supply, yes.
Not much. I was sold in five days.
Yeah.
With seven offers, all over asking.
Didn't let it wait for a little while, several years now. I haven't, I haven't stayed up.
You know, one of, one of the things I'm sure you know, you might have in your head that is not important is how we compare to the region and how we compare to a larger geographical location. Because that will also affect who's coming into the region and some other decision-making.
I do have some regional numbers toward the end of the presentation. Um, we are a little better off than Chester County, but not much.
Similar, but a little better.
Yeah. Anyway, um, I'll keep going with the bad news. Um, so here again, new, new units obviously, um, get a, a higher selling price generally than existing units. Those numbers continue to climb, uh, with the exception of a small drop this year. Uh, and again, existing units, those, those housing sale prices continue to go up. Overall, all types of units combined are now selling with a median price of four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, single-family detached units have a median price of four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. And attached units with three hundred twenty-five thousand, multifamily, uh, has the largest increase. Is now selling at a median price of two hundred forty-nine thousand dollars, but again, has the smallest sample size. Those, so again, but these prices are continuing to go up. Uh, by municipality, um, I had to adjust the, um, price categories, but you can see where the highest prices have to be. This works. So here in Lower Marion and Narberth, and up here around Horsham and Lower Gwinnett have the, the highest median housing prices. And the darkest gray color is the next highest bracket of median housing prices. Um, but overall, I would say that most municipalities had a, an increase from the twenty-two median prices that we recorded, I believe. Fifty-one of our sixty-two municipalities saw an increase in housing price. And again, when I, when I'm breaking it down into such small sample sizes, there are some municipalities that barely record any sales at all. So, um, so you have to take this with a grain of salt. So, uh, when you look at the counties comparatively, I do not find best comparisons for the county, um, compared to the rest of the Philadelphia region. I could only find the median sale prices as of the end of the fourth quarter of two thousand twenty-three. I was hoping to find a year-end total, and I just didn't see that calculated yet. Um, but overall, towards the end of two thousand twenty-three, this was Montgomery County's relative position. Chester's a little higher. Um, Bucks is a little higher too. I guess I didn't realize that. Uh, Delaware County and Philadelphia overall have lower median sale prices. Uh, our housing affordability index is a little concerning. Uh, this is a number that we present to you each year. It's the ratio of the median sale price to median household income. You can see that, um, the peak here, uh, and that was when we had a little bit of a housing crash. So, uh, those numbers have, uh, climbed even higher than those peak numbers previously, so.
So is that saying it's four percent higher or four times higher? Medium plus housing is four times higher than the median household income?
Yes.
It's a time, not, not a percentage.
It is, it is times, yes. Um, it is housing price divided by household. So. In summary, um, median housing prices increased by six point three percent overall. Uh, I would argue that this is a market out of balance. You know, we're, we're looking at numbers that are just not sustainable. And, um, I hate coming up here and presenting this doom and gloom news to all of you because, you know, we, we truly are working to try to find ways for communities to provide more affordability to current and future residents. So it's, um, uh, hard pill to swallow. But that being said, um, no spoiler alerts until I hit the next button on my, um, remote control. So in terms of the most expensive median housing price on a municipal level, Narberth, I believe, has taken the top slot for the first time. Uh, Narberth's median sale price was a mere seven hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. Um, I'm not sure that Narberth has ever held that top slot before. Uh, again, it only, there were only forty-five total sales in all of Narberth last year. So a small number of housing sales, but high end, uh, for Narberth. Least expensive municipalities in Montgomery County are Schwanxville, Norristown, and Cost. Ah, so, that's what I got for you this year.
Any questions for Ian?
You know, uh, we always, and we always have conversations in my family, since, uh, my two adult, uh, children live on the West Coast, about the, the cost of housing with the understanding of what, um, income is. So your ratio is really important because my son, my sons who live in the LA metro always say, but people living here are also making more money. So that's a really important one when you look at these numbers and, and the region.
The ratio, the number.
Yeah, how that ratio for Montgomery County would compare to others in the region, the region at large.
That tells you really what affordability. It might not be affordable, but it might be a lot better than other places.
No, I was, I was waiting for that, the good news. You kept talking about the bad news.
The good news was that there was a tiny drop in new sale price, new unit sale price.
I will say, it's, yeah, I did these reports for years and, you know, back then, you know, we'd see these increases, you know, especially housing boom, you know, fifty percent, twelve percent. And that was good news. That would, we celebrated that the market demand in Montgomery County was attracting people, was driving prices up. If you owned a home, you were benefiting from that. And so that still does, good side does exist. It's just, we're leaving people behind and that's, that's probably.
Yeah, and we've talked about this, I mean, the whole idea of affordable housing or housing affordability, um, is a difficult problem because it's, we, I've said this before, how do you make affordable housing affordable, affordable to build? And the problem is it's just difficult and time-consuming and costly to develop anything these days and without some kind of intervention. Um, housing affordability is tough, is a tough thing to, to take right now. And I think that's some of the big problems that has to be overcome by, um, by a whole myriad of, of, uh, fires in, in the situation, so.
Question to Dan, since you, you know, come with your, um, two hats, one with Septa. Does Septa do a lot of, um, uh, examination of what the change in housing prices are around where your lines are running?
Yes, um, we have, it's a fairly like nascent program that we're doing now, like through calling it transit oriented communities. Um, I think, actually, there's a few locations in Montgomery County that we're, we're looking at, I think, Ambler's. Then, um, we, we, I'm not developing these projects, sorry. The answer is yes, um, we do look at, we certainly look at like demographic, consider like how we provide service. But we are starting to get a little more into, um, you know, the possibility of partnering with like private, public, private partnerships. It's generally been something we've not done. Um, based on some readings of our enabling legislation, but that's evolved. And we are starting to, you know, look into it. It, it, it's gonna be a while before we make like real headway, but, I mean, it, it, it would be like the footprints are pretty small, like of where we can, where we can sort of activate. And it would have to be, you know, Septa own the property.
Oh, no, no, but I'm just saying as, it, I think would help us when we hear that younger families are looking for convenience and they're often looking maybe not to have a second car. They may want walkability more than previous generations. I mean, how, you know, that.
Do you think that partly explains why Narberth and Lower Marion are? Are, um.
I think it has all those things.
Yeah, I mean, Narberth particularly, um, is.
Has a school district, has transportation, has walkability, where, uh, forty years ago, the concerns and the interests were different. But I'm just wondering, we can say that, how that impacts how we're thinking about decisions making as we move forward.
The bigger issue is that, I mean, places like Narberth and Lower Marion are, are like fully built out too, like.
So they only get more.
Houses can get rehabbed, but I mean, like you have to subty mine lots, so.
Well, that's.
Increase the housing supply, which based on what it is, like it becomes a non-starter.
So, but that's why John Ernst and Lansdale probably, you know, is something.
Yeah, the, the problem is, uh, the growth, the growth in the county and the growth and like all of the region is really, it's, it's, it's exertive. It's not local. It's not really, there's a growth in the city, but the growth is really in, in like single-family homes has been further out. It's out in areas that are not accessible. I was shocked to see what our median house price had risen to in Lansdale.
What the heck? Twenty-seven years ago, I used to say, ever would have thought that, to young planners, to people I knew, look at Lansdale. I think it's the school district number one, you know, for young families. And it, it's the other issues that are really gonna make a low tax base.
How much did it raise you? For, uh, that's seven. No, I mean, the median.
Oh, the median, uh, yeah.
Any other comments? Any comments from? Anybody in the room? Anybody online?
But about Narberth, I think they've had the highest price post four foot for a while, but I'm kind of surprised to see what they're actually, uh, like, just highest overall. So a lot of the homes in Narberth are smaller than, say, that or some state.
Uh, by the way, I don't know if you heard, I don't know if you heard me note that Narberth only had forty-five sales in two thousand twenty-three versus Lower Marion's seven hundred twenty-four sales. So this is a lot bigger of a sample size to, um, play with, but, uh, yes.
As I said, there's not a lot of diversity in housing stuff. You got all twins and, and, and some singles, but they're small lots, like you say.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you.
Next up is, uh, Montgomery Awards update, Paul Patty.
Morning, everyone. It's Montgomery Awards season again. So, um, this is the, um, annual, my annual, um, quick little presentation, what I call beat the bushes, where I'm just ask, I'm gonna introduce that we're gonna be, the call for entries will be going out. Um, and, um, it's a little bit of a reminder about what our categories are and then asking Ford to be thinking about projects that they know that they've seen um, over the past year or so and think, oh, that'd be a great award winner. I better let them know and this is your opportunity. So I think we are, yeah, so, yeah, we have Montgomery Awards, so, and as you know, we have the Montgomery Award, the Planning Advocate Award, and the Environmental Stewardship. So it's our fifty-seventh year, about two hundred forty-one projects since nineteen sixty-seven. And just as a reminder, I, just as a reminder of what kind of projects we're looking at. So this is one of the ones from last year, Sora West. These are, it's a land development project, um. These are residential, office, commercial, it could be institutional, it could just good to site design, building placement. That's what we're looking for in a good project. This even created that great public space in Concha Hocken. That was a win-win for, uh, the developer, um, for historic preservation and for the community. So this is an example of a good land development, as is this, um, Shell Hays Commons. Reminded how that's pronounced a few times, um, at our science college. Again, uh, this was a great project, um, again, involved a bit of historic preservation, um, creating a good student space, common space, the Vernor, where you can use that space shown in the picture here um, for, you can park during the rest, you, parts of the week, and then it can be blocked off for events. And just, and it just helped, it's a great thing, I think it was a good catalyst or part of the catalyst that's working with Collegeville this year, of these years that are, they're trying to do that Main Street plan. So I just think, um, these are, that's how sometimes these projects really, I think are successful and we need to recognize that. Um, then we have revitalization. Remember the ironworks at Penquinn Landing along the Spookel River in Lower Marion? Um, again, this was an old steel factory. They left a lot of the gantries and the overheads and the hooks and whatever we call them, just as part of the, um, environment. And it really just adds to the space. Um, it's very, if you're down there any, well, probably this Friday afternoon, we'll be really busy with people coming along the trail and just stopping and having something at the cafe there and sitting down and enjoying the weather. Another revitalization project, very different, is Schwanxville. Again, they took that old firehouse, part of their whole effort to really revitalize their borough along the Perkyomen Trail and along the creek. But, um, they did a, they just, they hit this one out of the park. They got a really nice project, um, by reusing something and then, um, creating that public space around it. So open space, open space is a really great, can be another category. Um, I really like going back to Stone Lee. It's just a great project, natural landscape. Um, they not only preserve what was, what was an oldstead landscape, but also a really great, um, structure, a mansion in, in Lower Marion. Then there's transportation, walk, walk, bike, Pottstown. What Pottstown did with trying to really add, um, bike lanes, more sidewalk connections to get people throughout the borough without having to use a car all of the time. So again, this was a great transportation. Those are, sometimes these are harder ones to find. Um, they don't always rise to the surface the same way, but it's always good to be on the lookout for them. So this one, we had introduced a new, um, category or a new thing of emphasis called community impact a couple of years ago. Again, it's a project. This is, uh, Willow's at East Greenville, but, um, projects that went maybe above and beyond what the community impact would be. Especially in this particular case, this is not only a historic preservation project. I, I, I've been touting this even with, um, the affordable housing. Uh, I was at a summit yesterday for affordable housing, um, attainable housing in Pittsburgh. And, um, I actually mentioned this project because it was a project where, um, public for-profit company Ingram and Genesis, um, partnered to do this project. And it is, um, it runs the gamut. It has portable and there's also a couple of market rate units. So it goes from, from the very affordable to market rate. And then they took this old casket factory and, um, were able to get the credits for historic preservation, so. And then, um, the environment. So we have the Environmental Stewardship Award, but we still like to recognize that some projects that maybe don't meet the, um, their criteria for soil and water quality improvement, but still do something to really promote the environment. And we felt that the Grove at Meadowwood, not only it was a great project and, and fit the kind of housing they needed for their, to complete their master plan, but that it also just was a really great project that had some really great environmental, um, um, aspects to it. This pond that's, that's here has all the different, um, zones as you get into the water and the, the sedge is another, um, fence around it. They have a community garden. All these trees back here were planted as part of a revitalized project. So it was something that just really, um, was a good impact to the community. And they hosted us last year for the Montgomery Awards, so a great partner. So, the awards criteria, we evaluate all submissions. We select a group of nominations as visit, oh, a select group of nominations is visited, judged, and awarded. So these are the three criteria we think about. It's design, process, and impact. It really has to exemplify great design in planning and design, as well as how it really works within the community. We often look at the process. What was the process that was, um, that they went through to do this? When we see those public-private partnerships, or they see that they've reached out into a community and done something different, or they brought in other things to make it like going out above and beyond to, to, um, preserve the casket factory as opposed to tearing down that building and doing something different. Would have been, he admitted, it would have been a cheaper project to do, but it was still worth doing. And then the impact on the community. So again, we look at all three of those things as we look at these projects. So, that was the Montgomery Award. Now we also have the Planning Advocate Award. It's recognized as an engaged citizen, appointed elected official or board or community organization that has made significant and sustained contributions in advancing good planning in, uh, Montgomery County. And these are a few of our last from the last few years. Um, and, um, we hope to get one this year as well. Um, so anyway, at the, and we recognize some of these views, Paul Meyer, uh, Meyer from Morris Arboretum, um, the EAC from Addington, I said, I believe, Kate Harper, um, Tom Hilton, and then this past year was Phil Snell. And then we have the Environmental Stewardship Award, um, as you may remember, or if you don't, that's, or maybe a few of the newer members might not. This we do in conjunction with the Conservation District. Um, this is their award. We help them do it. We do a lot of the legwork in producing the documents you see, the presentation, the videos. But we work hand in hand, but it's their award to bring in and, um, judge. And this is an example from just last year. Again, this is the Jacob Rife Park, Park Stream and Bloodplains Restoration. Really great project along the Skipback Creek, where they, that what you're seeing right here is a whole big sort of basin that they carved out of their land. That gets flooded periodically when there's high, heavy rains. Um, it sits there for a while, all that silt falls out, and then it, there's an overflow for it to go back into the stream. And then what it does is improves the water quality for the Skipback Creek, and then eventually also improves the soil quality. So, The water quality for the Skipback Creek and then eventually also improves the soil quality. So. The next step, um, we need to beat the bushes for nominations, says Stephen Dulcie, who often chaired this. Committee will know that the question is, how many have you gotten? And then it's like always to the last minute, the the um, the um, call for entries will be going out later this week. Uh, it'll be due in sometime in May. We haven't picked the exact date yet. And then we'll be aiming for June to do our tours with the committee. But um, if you have any ideas, please just think about having someone nominated. I don't think, one of our board members cannot and we cannot. But think about nominating, having someone nominated or reach out to myself or my staff and say, hey, I think this is a great project. And we might be able to follow up and have somebody nominate or they can, it can be self-nominated. A project can be nominated by the developer and the person that's their owner. So, any questions? We do not have any holdovers from last year. So what, some years we have been had that advantage, but this is not one of them. Okay, that that was hopefully a, yes.
So um, I was on the committee last year. Um, I guess my headset was on the design and the impact. And I'm really glad that you pull in the process and how they work with the community or non-public or whatever. So as a criteria for consideration. So I think that's great because that would get lost in, at least for me, looking at a project.
And thank you for saying that because because maybe as we do the work for this year, I need to maybe make sure that the committee understands that, that there is. What the process was for the project as well as this, as opposed to just visiting the site and seeing it's a great looking project.
Right, right. So you brought that out and that was great. I I think we also talked about an award that honored Charlie. Um, and I don't know if now is the right time to reengage that, but here's our awards ceremony. Um, I didn't work with Charlie a whole lot on the committee, but he was here forever. Um, and I think the board was um, believable to try to. Make an award for Charlie or rename one of the awards here for Charlie. So I just wanted to bring that up for consideration by me.
So we did have discussions about that and I think the inclination right now is to change the Planning Advocate Award to. To the Charlie Tornetta Award, but we're gonna, we need to reach out to the family and discuss it with them, make sure they're comfortable with it.
My understanding is Bob is pretty, you know, tight with the family. Perhaps he should make the first entry.
Yeah, I I think, I know it'd be well accepted, but I will verify that, you know, through Jake's, who is pretty much running the show there.
Yeah, so we should, we'll figure out a time. We have, we have some time to do that, but we'll, and. I would, would not want to put it out in like any publication that we're doing now. Bob was just saying the same thing and, you know, I need to talk to Bob about reaching out to the family and having a conversation. See if we can do that.
Okay, great.
Okay, Saddleton Community Planning Update. Matt Lubitz and Chloe. Morning, Matt. Morning. Morning, everyone. My name is Matt Lubitz. I'm a community planner um, with the Planning Commission. This is uh, Chloe Moore. Um, and uh, so. I'm sorry.
I have to get used to that. They're gonna interrupt you.
I would give, I would give Chloe a more uh, a bigger introduction, but yeah, she's been up here basically every meeting that I've watched, so. Okay, so we have a new uh, planning assistance contract with Sardarton Borough. Um, for twenty twenty four through twenty twenty six. So we are here just to talk a little bit about that. Um. Okay, so Sardarton Borough is in the Indian Valley region um, with five other municipalities, Southford, Upper Southford. Lower Southford, uh, Telford and Franconia. Um, these six municipalities have been working together for a long, long time. Um, I would say this is, the Indian Valley is a a pretty good success story for regional planning. Um, and uh, they are in the midst of. Working on a new comprehensive plan. I'm sure you'll hear about that from Eric at some point uh, in the future. We'll talk, we'll get more into the context of Sardarton when we get into the revitalization plan. Um, but I want to kind of jump into the past contract and then this, this upcoming contract here. Um, in the past, as I mentioned, the revitalization plan is the major uh, project that we worked on. Um, Chloe, we'll get to that in just a minute. Um, we also engaged in some zoning support, so updating certain uh, sections of the zoning ordinance. I think the most notable. Uh, that was adopted was the sign ordinance, uh, some updates to that. Um. What we are working on for the current contract here, um, I would say number one. In my mind is to reestablish a lot of the relationships that we've had with Sardarton. Um, Stacy Crandall is the new township manager. She takes over for Mike Cole or Mike Borough Manager, sorry. Takes over for Mike Cole, who uh, longtime manager, been there for decades. So um, talking uh. Trying to establish that relationship as well as they have a new solicitor and new engineer as well. So I think the relationships is gonna be a big. Um, just kind of a a point for the next couple of years, just making sure that um. They're as comfortable with us as as previous regime has been.
Was there a political change in Sardarton?
So Mike, uh, as far as I'm aware, is transitioning towards retirement. Um, and I think there were some questions with. Um, the solicitor and the engineers, just as far as they're, how comfortable they were with some of the feedback they've gotten. I don't know if Chloe has more of the the context on that, but I.
Yeah, I could, I'm, I can say more about that, I guess. So there. Sort of was a political change, but it was a while ago and that isn't why anybody's leaving. There's a different story for every person, but the, there was um. The engineering firm that was found to have been overcharging lots of municipalities a couple of years. Yeah, Boucher and James. So they dumped them once that was discovered that they were stealing from people. Um, so that that's why they have a new engineer. And then Mike is retiring and yeah, the solicitor change. The solicitor change is so, it may be a little bit coming with a new manager or two.
Who's their solicitor now?
The new solicitor.
I worked with them for seven years and I never met their solicitor or had any interaction with him. I do remember.
I don't remember the.
Maybe that was the problem.
Who's the new solicitor?
Solicitor, uh, John Torrente from Begley, Carlin and Mendio. So.
And in terms of political, you know, they have um, a mix of Republican and Democrat. Elected officials and they're one of the municipalities that. Um, both parties have uh, roles on the, you know, like the, the chair is Republican and the vice chair of the. The council is Democrat. I'm not sure if that's the current situation, but they, they pride themselves very much on being able to work together and. Um, work across party lines. And as we know, at the hyper local level, at a small borough. Sort of a lot of the big national political issues don't really come into place. So they, they've been good about working together and. Um, that hasn't, the, the diverse political landscape hasn't been that much of an issue for them.
Is your council seven members?
I think so. It's just there. That seems fine. That seems right.
We can't promise that we won't interrupt you.
That's fine. Um, some of the, some of the uh. Uh, current and future work uh, that we've, we've kind of already started is uh, to uh, work on the zoning ordinance. Um, as far as reorganization, reorganization of it especially. It's a pretty good ordinance as far as the content of it goes. Um, it's just a little bit uh, disorganized. Uh, one of the main things that. We're working on right now is to establish a use regulations chapter, which essentially organizes. Uses, definitions and the specific regulations into one section easily referenced and easily uh. Find all the information in one spot. So that, that's like one of the things also just kind of the order of things and cleaning up where there might be. Gaps or uh, you know, redundancies, things like that. They update their ordinance actually somewhat frequently as far as like amendments go. Um, so that's, you know, codifications. Another thing that we're working on with them is is with, you know, municipalities that update somewhat frequently that add amendments. It's just about. Again, organizing that and making that clear and fitting that in and making sure that um, everything that's been adopted is represented in in the. Ordinance as a whole. Um, as far as a complete rewrite, I'm not sure. Do you, have they, probably not for a long time.
No, but they've been going like updating chapters.
Right. Yep, so that's uh, other miscellaneous zoning changes. Um, uh, that's. Uh, a part of, a part of that. And then um, another uh, major thing that we'll be doing with them is is talking historic preservation. Um, they obviously have a lot of historic buildings. Um. A pretty good example of historic, uh, you know, adaptive reuse of historic buildings uh, with Univest. And so making sure that, you know, they know about proper historic, you know. Preservation regulations, things like that. Uh, making sure that if they, they want to protect these buildings, that they do so. That they change their, their code to, to protect these buildings. Um, if, if that's the route that they want to go. Um, because they, they do have quite a number of uh, significant resources there. Um.
Do you have a sense of how they're going to try to protect them?
Not yet. Um, that's something that will come up when we kind of get to that point in the next couple of months with the zoning. Um, trying to establish some sort of. Adaptive reuse section or historic preservation as far as like different uh, approvals needed to demolish, things like that. Uh, but we haven't really gotten to that point yet. Um.
They've done a fairly good job in the heart of their community. I mean, over the past, you know, thirty years. Univest, Univest does hold that corner pretty well, but down um, just. The street and they've done fairly well. I mean, it just, they're building on what they've done already and increasing it.
Yeah, I think there is just in the back of everyone's mind, like. Univest does operate in a lot of those buildings. So if there's something that would happen. Then there's a lot of vulnerabilities. Yeah, so just making sure that the, the borough is. Aware of that and aware of the tools that they have to protect those resources. That's, that's.
They also look over their shoulder at Harley'sville, where they lost their bank and their insurance company, which totally changed both. The fiber of the community and employment.
Yeah.
You get the sense that they're looking to preserve historically significant buildings? Or are they looking to preserve old buildings? Well, it is a distinction.
No, I said and tradition, not is there.
Because it's a battle, it's, it's a battle that, you know. Is right occurring and some communities are using historical preservation ordinances to. Maintain old buildings and prevent. Redevelopment or development of those properties when they're not necessarily. In some terms would not be considered historic building. So do you get a sense of what they're trying to do or have you got it that far yet?
Haven't really gotten that far. My guess, um, based on the work that we've done with them already is that they would lean towards historically significant. As opposed to um, just a blanket if it's been built before this year, it's protected. Um. And that would, that would require going through and actually identifying the building specifically, um, which can be a little bit of a. Little bit of a political issue in the minds of the, of the people in the borough, just because you're putting. You're, you're preventing people from doing certain things with their, their property or and you're deciding that this person versus that other person, right? So um, there, it does come with some challenges, but that would be. Based on the conversations, based on the tenor of the, of the, the work that we've done, that would be my guess. So. So a little bit, a little bit of context, uh, as far as, you know, the, the county planning commission has been working in Sardarston for a long time. This is just a. A s- a sampling of what we've done over the last twenty years. We've been working with them for even longer than that. Um. We've been working with them uh, as a individual municipality, we've been working with them in the context of regional planning. Um, and so, uh, you know, a number of updates, plans, guidelines, things like that have. Um, we've been pretty significantly involved in. Um. And so I'm gonna pass it up to Chloe to talk about the revitalization plan, which is the significant uh, part of the previous uh, contract here.
So I'm, uh, I wrapped up this project with Sardarton, uh, doing a new revitalization plan. Was a partnership between the borough, this organization called Sardarton Connects, which I will tell you more about in a moment, and us. So Sardarton Connects is what is now their business improvement district. They started a bid in twenty sixteen. And when they reauthorized in twenty twenty one, they combined with the Main Street Organization and split off from Telford. Um, so now they have this organization called Sardarton Connects. You should go visit their snazzy website. It's a screenshot from it, but. Sardartonconnects.com. I'm not gonna go to it right now, but check it out. They've got, they've done a lot of good stuff. Um. And in terms of this revitalization plan, they really partnered with the borough. The Borough Council appointed a few people and the Board of Directors of Sardarton Connects appointed a few people to a steering committee for this plan. So it was really a joint effort. Um, for this project. Okay, so the steering committee met from September twenty three, one through April twenty three, about a year and a half. They did an online Survey Monkey survey that got over thirteen hundred responses. Sometimes we don't see that many responses from like an enormous township. Never mind a little borough. So I thought that was very impressive.
What's the population of.
About uh, seven thousand. Yeah, not all of them were residents. About eighty percent though were residents of the survey taker. So that's really. And they encouraged people who didn't live there, but did regularly, you know, visit the downtown area to also take the survey because of the context of the plan. So. Makes sense. Yeah. An, an amazing um, survey turnout. Even that in itself is valuable for. Sardarton Connects and the council, just to see what everyone is saying on a survey like that. Uh, okay, we did, this is an outreach event. They have a third Friday, uh, where they. Bring out food trucks and have a big party. They don't always close Main Street, but that some months they do. Was a good time. So we tabled there one time. And then we had an in-person public event at the Broad Theater. It's really fun. Um, and then this plan was adopted by council in January of this year and by. Sardarton Connects Board of Directors in February. So this is the plan, chapters, we go through the community context. Um, and I'm gonna breeze through stuff for most of these chapters a little bit. Can see what's going on. So. Sardarton really is connected both. To the Philadelphia region and to the Lehigh Valley up here. That's kind of, you definitely get people commuting that way for work. And connections that direction, talking about that. Um. So this is gonna be an assortment of a few random things as a sort of context and background. Uh, one thing that they've already been doing is they've decided to really make an effort in the borough to improve. Traffic safety and pedestrian safety. So here. There's this uh, road that comes into an ang- at an angle to Broad Street. They've. Kind of closed off a big triangle of the street to make it funnel to one area rather than have just a big swath of pavement. You can see that a bicyclist. Is uh, coming out of that street there. And they've put up these pedestrian walk signs that have. Uh, and, and better crosswalks that have the solar collectors where it actually does light up around there. I managed to catch it lighting up in this picture.
I'm thinking to myself, whoa.
And this is an aerial of another really big bad intersection in Sardarton from twenty twenty two and then twenty twenty three. You can see they've just improved the pedestrian crosswalks here. So they've, they've start, they've just gone on and tried to make some efforts to improve stuff. And. Population dip was in the nineties, you know, in, in a lot of our communities, we see it a little. Earlier, but back up by two thousand and population has risen since then. Um, and it was. In the year two thousand that they really started undertaking a purposeful revitalization effort. And can see that DVRPC's predictions are that the population will continue to increase gradually, but it's definitely still going up. The future. So residents um, mostly leave the borough for work, although there are about two thousand jobs in the borough. And it's a mix. And it's a mix here, you know, I think. Uh, the types of jobs that residents holds has changed over time to some extent. This I thought was interesting, and this may not be the best way of looking at it, some, oh, this is where I.
What's the biggest employer in Sauterston?
Univest. I I was thinking I don't need my notes and it's just because I don't have the county numbers at night. Oh, no, I do. Okay, so twenty ten median income, these are a number of comparable or boroughs that they they kind of look to. Percasino isn't Bucks County. Montgomery County median income in twenty ten was about seventy six thousand dollars, so. You know, Sauterston is significantly below that, but all the boroughs are ten to twenty or more thousand dollars below median. Um, and then in twenty twenty, uh, they all come up a bit percent change. Except for Hatfield Borough, but that it's a very small, not a lot of people there. Uh, so numbers might be fishy. Um, but still, still significantly lower than uh the county median. Um, but Sauterston's for, you know. Increase was the same as Landsteal's and greater than Perksey or Hat Hatfield. Um, just interesting to note that are we see significantly lower median income in in all of these boroughs. Anyway. Yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, it's interesting, at least that the number of households has dropped. From twenty ten to twenty twenty, except for Percy.
Yeah, so that's inter- that is interesting. Um, the total number of households that they're counting, that is in populations household. This is. Uh, Census Bureau American Community Survey data, so it's five-year estimates.
They all dropped, yeah.
Do you think the boroughs have older buildings, uh, housing stock? Uh, which would be more affordable to people who are making a moderate income and therefore. You know, their median income is probably lower than the county at large.
Yeah, I think that's. And they also have more diverse housing stock. In a lot of townships, you find, you know, ninety percent of the buildings are single family detached.
And the diversity of population who is living in Sauterston is very different than it was years ago. It is a. The the Asian Hispanic community has increased. It's a really good school district and you have affordable housing.
Yeah.
What did you say? What most people were saying, just kids staying home and. Not more people living in the same households.
Just a quick glance at land use, you know, the. Interestingly, the amount, the percentage of land in the borough that's dedicated to single-family detached housing. Is lower than the county as a whole, but that's the the percent of units that are single-family detached. Uh, the county is higher, so um, confusing. Like this, this one is acreage on the right. And the left one is number of units, so um, else of note. You know, not surprisingly, comparing land use with the county, you find countywide. High percentages of open space and agriculture and things that you don't find in a small borough. Um. And mixed-use buildings, which feature prominently in a revitalization plan, because it's really common in in Sauterston to have. Some sort of a retail or office, commercial use with residential above that we don't see as much countywide. Okay, enough numbers. Uh, we talked briefly also about this climate change vulnerability analysis that was done in. That we did at the countywide level and you can see that these there's some of these darker red spots. Above average heat risk in particular um in Sauterston. Not surprisingly, again, it's more developed, more services. Hard services, collect heat. Okay, so in two thousand one, Sauterston and Telford jointly adapted. This revitalization plan, and that was in two thousand eight, they hired. Someone to do this. They really wanted to see a reverse in the population decline and. Uh, bring businesses back to the boroughs, bringing shoppers back to the boroughs. They'd seen a lot of change and wanted to see something doing. And this really did spark um now decades of. Uh, effort on the part of the municipalities and others, good good uh good planning and good projects and then. Some real uh accomplishments. So the borough. Got an older picture here. They've they redid their pool. A while ago, in the early two thousands, I think, mid two thousands. To be really kind of a a larger fun center kind of place. It is really fun. You should go give kids, take them. Uh, Sauterston Borough Pool, and that's definitely a draw. And then they have this large park next. Like kind of across the street from the pool. And in the summer, they have concerts in the span shell. They've recently undertaken an effort to kind of. Revitalize and redo that park. They built walking paths. They put in a lot more trees and vegetation. They put in a new really, really nice playground. Again, take your kids, Sauterston. Um, they really don't come in for a lot of grants from us. Yeah, they've applied for one grant, which they ended up not doing the project, it which it was awarded.
They have actually a lot of Eagle Scout projects, isn't it? There's so many. It's a couple of whiskey's in southern area, and they have been the benefit and beneficiary of several Eagle Scout projects, so that. That doesn't make the difference between a grand, but it helps out with things that.
So these were borough initiatives that really uh have helped with their public spaces. Um, the borough also with the county's uh redevelopment. Means plenty from the mid two thousands, redid all the streetscaping here with this.
Huge.
Cobblestones, benches, trees. I mean, it's really the um, the lampposts, everything along the main street. It looks really nice. And they've also, this is a plaza that is owned by the borough and they've put a sculpture in there and um. It did look really nice. And then these buildings are owned by Septa. Where this used to be served and the borough has a long-term lease from them and did. A total, the borough did the fit out for these tenants, and this has a really good restaurant northbound. It's on the southbound side of the tracks, but go there anyway. And then the other side, this is a nail salon, and they're about to open. There's a third building kind of behind there on the other side, and they're about to open Brass Collar Brewing there in that building.
The same guys who own the restaurant there?
No, no.
What's the name of the brewery?
Brass Collar. Yeah, write that one down. Important things for later.
Northbound also own uh.
Food is good. Um, so you know, they've.
Is Brass Collar a new brewery or?
Uh, maybe, I'm not sure. They have a location. After you go, you can come provide an update for all of us.
But they also have outside dining at Northbound, which we used during COVID. It was unbelievable.
It's really nice.
Yeah.
Um, and the there's gonna be between um. This building and the the tiny nail salon building and the Brass Collar Brewing, there's gonna be an outdoor plaza with. Cornhole and seating and stuff in the boroughs, putting all that in.
We can get nails done, eat dinner and then go drink beer.
Yeah. If only you could actually take the train there. Funny story, a developer came in who wanted to develop a. An underutilized property. I'm going Oscar here in Sauterston. Developer came in, you know, very preliminary going, hey, we're thinking of doing this project. It'll be mixed use. Wanna put in residential and commercial on the site. Um, what do you, what do you guys think? And they showed us some of their kind of promotion promotional, the. You know, mock-up promotional material they would have for the site, and it said ten-minute walk to the Sauterston Train Station. And I didn't catch it at first, but someone on the planning commission was like, you know, there are no passenger trains at the station, right? And they were like. Oh. Yes, there is a train station there, but there's no train that people just get on and off there. They would love to see someday, by the way, actual passenger.
Freight transportation trains still run on there?
Yes, freight trains still run on there.
Yeah, a little electric train, you know, something kind of.
Dinner and have a train passing by like the whole time.
Well, that's not unusual. That happens.
I mean, trains do. Okay, um. Other good stuff that happened in Sauterston. So I think the last time I presented on Sauterston, this was about to open. The um developer took over the historic Broad Theater, which has been closed for several decades, like since.
We were in there.
Yeah, we went. It was.
Oh, yeah, it was nominated.
Ninety, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've told them we'd come back.
If you haven't been in to see a movie, you should totally go. There's this um Italian restaurant next door and there is a little bar in there too. You know, of what the priorities are here.
So they do go that.
Uh, and this is just a really great example of.
What's sorry, what what's the sign on the right? Are you about to?
This on, yeah, so this this there's a great example of adaptive reuse. This is Penn Everens Financial. This is a historic. Um, paper making factory.
And what was it?
Paper. They made paper. Um, and it's been, they did a really nice job rehabbing the building, um, and it's inactive. Uh, office use there. That's off of Broad Street on Penn Street. Yeah, you don't see it really, like it's it's not that far off of Broad Street, but then beyond this building, it's all residential.
It's a nice.
Some really nice twins. And it doesn't look nice. They did a great job.
Chloe, what's the age of that building? Do you know?
Um. It's in the revitalization.
So it's.
Copy of that. Go get it off of Anastasia's.
Okay, so it's early nineteen hundreds. It does, does it fall within the historical preservation?
Okay, so since you guys wanna talk about this, historic preservation, there's a lot of different things you can do. And when a municipality is deciding what they wanna do, if they wanna have any kind of ordinance, part of that process is for them to do their own research. What's historically significant time periods in our history and our development in our community? What's important to us? What are the landmarks people care about? So that's, there is no sort of established standard of what is historic. Like, that's not, not really a thing. So you gotta look at your own community and say, well, Sauterston, when were things built here? Was there a period of development that was. Uh, kind of anchors the fabric of this community from a certain, you know, a couple of decades or certain period that that really sort of. May was is historic for our place and what we were built. And so that that's a conversation the community has to have, is they're trying to decide. If they wanna establish any kind of historic protections. And that's part of that conversation is also. Is it just a few significant anchor buildings that really give our town character, or is it sort of. The whole is is greater than the sum of its parts? Do we need to protect this whole district that was developed at and at the same time? Because if we keep losing bits of it, you know, e- each individual building may not seem amazing, but the whole thing is important. Uh, in its character. So that's a conversation they also have to have, so it's.
Right now is the question we're about to ask you.
Yeah, they have not had those conversations yet is, yeah, but. That's that's part of how how they establish a historic preservation ordinance is is deciding what's important to them. And 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 looking historic, that we should be based on some kind of actual fact, can say, you know, pull a number randomly. And say, well, you know, between this year and this year is our historically significant period. When when were things developed? When did things come in? And what matters? Hopefully, they'll get around to doing that and talking about that. They want to. I don't know that they're gonna establish an ordinance. I think they're gonna talk about it and think about it and see, see what people feel. But it's a good process to go through anyway. You get a better sense of your own community and what's important to.
We're still through it now. We're starting the process.
I mean, I mean, they did a historic difference, but I don't know that they ever went as far as putting an ordinance in place, but it did the historic. Usually the first step is. Uh, then they have to decide what they wanna, what how they wanna, if they wanna manage anything. Really observing something, codifying the preservation of these buildings, but as you said, streets games, so.
Yeah. We'll see. I would be very interested to see what happens.
That's mass problem.
That's mass problem. And then I wanted to just touch on this. So this is the Sauterston Area High School used to be right in Sauterston. Lots of people could walk there. It moved to Farmfield and Franconia where no one can walk, but that's been done for a while.
But it's closer than it was supposed to be, remember?
And maybe we'll get a trail there someday.
Absolutely. It's a village extension, you know.
Yeah, the Liberty Bell Trail Plan. So this is a new pieces of a new development that's been going in for years now, but more things are going in. Uh, it has a new name, I think, since I was last here. They're calling it Town Gate Commons, Towny Gate Commons. Um, it's a lot of townhomes, uh, some mixed-use buildings and some commercial pad sites. A Dollar General did go in. And a Starbucks is approved and going in on the site as well. Yes, that'll be facing Broad. The Dollar General is facing County Line Road. Um, so that's the update there.
Is the Starbucks next to the Dollar General that?
No. The Starbucks is gonna be almost next to the Dunkin' Donuts. It's already there, but they say that. Yeah, it's very close to the exit off of three oh nine for one thirteen. They they say that the Dunkin' Donuts, sometimes the drive-through line is like backed up onto Broad Street, so. It may be that there's plenty of demand for both of them right there.
What's with the, what's with the eight in town?
County, county eight. It's it's fancy town. Oh, Chloe, gotta get control of this group.
Okay, then we go into um an analysis of what's there in Sauterston now and what's the market like. Um, I'm just gonna share a couple of highlights from that. So, as we already mentioned, Univest is the largest employer. This building here is the original bank that became Univest Bank. Univest still owns and maintains that historic building. Um, the other employers are, you know, a mix of of different things. Uh, so.
So there's the town answering SDC, SDC.
It's true, uh.
Is that right near the town shopping center?
No, that's on Main Street. Town Answering Service, though, is a. Have a picture of that in their revitalization plan, because they also have a beautiful historic building that they rehabbed. Town Answering Service.
Univest, Univest Bank is a deco building, right in the center.
This one?
No, 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 the one right on the corner.
Yeah.
That is beautiful.
Univest has like eight buildings, so.
But it's also like the one that's in um, in Skid, not not Skidback. And I swam, which is a beautiful building, right, John?
So the. The existing businesses, the largest categories, these are NACs categories, uh, NACs codes. Of the largest category is other services in terms of the number of businesses, and that's a catch-out category that they use for. Personal care, civic, religious organizations and funeral homes, things like that, and an assortment of other things. Retail, finance and insurance, we saw that, uh, professional medical service. And one thing about Sauterston that that is a little bit of a challenge, so they've got the Main Street here and they've got Broad Street here. And that you can see all of these red and um the hot pink, red is retail and the kind of hot. Bright pink is mixed use. They're not, there's a little cluster right here, but a lot of the rest of it is pretty spread out. And I think that creates some challenges for them in terms of, it's not that far to walk, but if you have. A store and then you've got an apartment building and then you've got a school or something else, and then you get to another store or restaurant. It's. It's a little bit challenging because they don't have as long of a stretch that's kind of united. So it's just. Thing they're working on. And streetscaping is definitely in their goal to sort of continue that and try to commit that. Resident spending, people spend more on housing than anything else, followed by transportation. It's true everywhere. Um, the overall numbers say that in terms of uh business intake and resident spending on. Um. Retail and commercial uses say that that Sauterston is bringing people to the borough, which is not really a surprise. Some of their businesses are doing well. Um, and then the survey respondents do have some wishes and they really want more restaurants, bars, breweries. And then retail stores, which are always a challenge. There is also a significant call for a farmer's market. And we discussed. They have, it's still going. They have a, they have, they do it on a weekday evening, which they've found wildly successful. So that's great. Um, and then we discussed with them, and they've had a few of these come and go. They had an escape room, they had a pour-your-own-candle place. But that's definitely a trend that we see is an interest in experience businesses. They, like most places, sort of think they have a parking problem, but don't really. I mean, not everyone thinks that they do, because there really is plenty of parking. Some, there are people that complain about parking. So with the community, we did a SWAT, with the steering committee, we did a SWAT analysis, which I'm not gonna share the results of with you. Um, and then the steering committee came up with this vision and a set of goals to reach toward that vision. So I will share this vision. We envision Satterton residents and businesses flourishing in a sustainable community where we live, work, and gather together. Where our economy is healthy and the borough is attractive to residents, businesses, and visitors alike. Where people of all ages and backgrounds enjoy the preserved history, diversity, and culture of our vibrant borough. We seek to honor the past while embracing the future by enhancing the diversity of businesses and services provided in the borough. While maintaining Satterton's quaint small-town character. That's what they decided, the wordsmith that they were going for. And then there are eight goals um, that are in priority order from the steering committee. So having a thriving business district. Being a welcoming community, this was really a high priority for them. Uh, great appearances, making sure it looks, looks great. And clean, attractive, inviting. Transportation, making it more inviting, in particular for pedestrians and bicyclists. Uh, and just making sure that there's safe and convenient ways to get around, all modes. They are excited about bus revolution. And they want their micro-transit yesterday. So there's a comment for Dan. They want it now, cuz they have, they have a lifeline service, you know, the one thirty-two bus runs once every one to two hours. So, you know, you try to take the bus. The micro-transit, they can call a ride and get a ride to the Lansdale Train Station, and that they're ready to do that. They're like, can we please have this now? I wanna, you know, take, accept it to the airport. Spend two dollars and fifty cents to get to the Lansdale Train Station.
Being there the last time.
Well, we're phasing, we're phasing off in all of our implementation. I'd have to tie, I don't remember if I've had Farley's and tried to that, but. Um, is I think I'm pretty sure it's.
So when you say, when you say last time, is it the last to be implemented?
Yeah, yeah. But you see, there is ability to develop village extensions even when they're not a lot. There's not a lot of property in town, has good school, really good district, um, it's affordable, you know, they're not far from Lansdale.
Well, they what, they're, they're ready for bus revolution. Goal number five, preserve housing in neighborhoods. And this is an interesting piece of that. Support businesses by adding incremental development to create new customers by adding new residents. And they were supportive of that. You know, they don't wanna see a ten-story tower come into their town, but they're, they're interested in incremental residential development to support their commercial. Uses. Um, the arts, that's been a big part of Satterton's kind of identity and sort of brand in recent years, and they like that and they're interested in building on that. Uh, parks, making sure they have great parks, which is already really a good asset to the borough and promotes sustainability. Uh, so this is Branch Creek Brewing, which just came in on Chessman Street in Satterton. And this picture actually didn't make it into the revitalization plan, because they're so new, but I got a picture for the presentation. Um, so, um, check out more cool stuff. Then there are a bunch of recommendations that go with the goals to support the goals. Uh, support the business community, including existing businesses and new businesses. And continue Satterton Connect's work. They have a lot of events for business owners, uh, continue that, try to support each other, networking, collaboration. Maintain a list of and promote vacancies. They have this one strip shopping center that has vacant spaces, been vacant for a while. And try to support the redevelopment of underutilized properties. And this gets at um, first floors that are in residential use, but in a really commercial area. They'd love to see those changed, which I think is a challenge, but you know, to try to incentivize that as they can. Uh, in terms of supporting being a welcoming community, increase programming for youth, build on their great community events and increase those. Um, provide information in multiple languages, which is really needed now in Satterton. Uh, improve physical accessibility where they can and try to create some kind of a community calendar that gathers all the great events that different organizations. Are doing, things we hear kind of commonly, but hopefully they can make some of that happen. Streetscaping, they really have this goal. Extend the trees, curving benches and trash receptacles further north along Main Street. And to more of the business areas along Broad Street. I think that's gonna be great as they're able to do that. And they have been moving forward with this. And the county money ran out in. Two thousand eight, never stopped paying them to do that, but they've, they already have extended it some and they wanna keep doing it. Sidewalks, crosswalks, trails, pathways, uh, more arts businesses, start a farmer's market. They don't have a great outdoor plaza space, although Unives just vacated the space that they let the borough. Use for stuff, so that might be their new plaza, but sort of new spaces. This chapter just had an implementation table, which you're not supposed to read, and some recommendations. I mean, not, not supposed to read in this presentation. Goal is not that you can see that. Um, and some suggestions for grant funding opportunities. And then the public participation, um, you know, I have some highlights from the survey here. This was. Uh, what three words would you use to describe downtown Satterton today? And this is a word cloud of those words. Lots of positive things and some negative, or some sort of, you know, up and coming or on its way kind sentiments. Priorities, attracting more businesses, expanding entertainment recreation options, and improving streetscape improvements. Uh, did, says the borough need more community events? Yes. Uh, so.
Greatest answer, I don't know, or it was just very close.
Well, yeah, it's greatest, but followed fairly closely, but I don't know. But people in the comments had a million ideas for events. Um, how do you typically get to downtown Satterton to the business area? I would say, I was a little surprised by this because. Um, of those thirteen hundred respondents, I figured most of them aren't gonna live right there, but the. This is forty-two percent said, said that they walk, um, and eleven percent they typically bike. Yes, we had several people saying more than one respondent say, I use a wheelchair to get downtown and I go on the sidewalks, so. Uh, is there enough parking? Fifty-nine percent say yes, twenty-seven percent say no, eight percent don't drive. So, you know, there's not a huge perception of a major parking problem. Uh, priorities for improvements, fixing broken crumbling sidewalks, increasing visibility of pedestrians and crosswalks. So those are the kind of the top priorities. Additional comments, you know. Lots of great feedback, enthusiastic participants, people who said, thank you for doing this. Satterton's been getting better and better. Love to see it. Wanna see more. Um. This was, maybe someone else could clue me in. Please look at what other boroughs, small towns are doing for teens regarding recreation facilities. Tell me later if you know the answer to that one. And this is a picture of the open house event we held at the Broad Theater. So that was a lot of fun. And thanks to Anastasia for doing the plan, Bill McClave doing the maps for the plan, Eric works in the region and sports work in Satterton. And I'm done.
Um, do you know?
Any other, any further interruptions for Chloe?
Chloe, do you know what um, the income that's made from the bid participants is being used to fund?
Um, yeah, so the bid does events. They have staff, so they're paying their staff. Um, running the third Friday events for them mostly is what they do, but they, they're partners in other events too. And marketing, they do ribbon cuttings for new businesses. Um, they have like a business information packet that they've designed in collaboration with the borough. So if someone wants to come and open a business, and then they do a lot of these. They have a monthly networking for business owners where they have a speaker on some topic and then a time to just chat. They provide. Uh, food at those, so there's a lot of things they can spend money on.
And and is a bid, is a bid the one that's gonna be potentially providing the increased number of events that they're looking to do?
Because they were like, oh, more events, um, cuz it's a lot of work to put them on. Oh, I have another interesting anecdote, which is. I don't have to look up where it is unless you remember, Eric. One of the meatpacking plants nearby wants to uh, pay their employees to volunteer. At events in Satterton, so maybe they're about to get a bunch more volunteers.
That's interesting. Is it the JV, not JDS or?
No, I think it is. It wasn't Hatfield Meats, it wasn't the other one, that's right there. Um, so that may be, that might be, it helped them to put on events they have.
I assume not, like during work hours.
Well, yeah, the events are, you know, Friday night, weekend.
You know, but I I remember, um, you know, some of the larger, comes like Pico and stuff, all listed, they are involved and let people come out.
And they were paid for that.
Yeah, we do, we actually do forty hours a year.
Just remind me, what um, nominee for a Montgomery Award did we have? It wasn't the theater?
It was the theater. The theater, no, it was the theater and wasn't the whole thing. And we said, well, we'll talk about it. We, uh, we said that if we could. Make it a larger kind of contest.
The next thing.
We're out of time on this agenda, I am.
Yeah, so, so maybe we should encourage.
Welcome to take down.
Encourage.
We're gonna have, even have a couple beers before we.
I think, I think, I, I think.
I think this was a co.
We should encourage Satterton Connects to apply for a Montgomery Award. Cuz it seems like uh, it hits all the buttons rather than an individual project. That's my personal opinion. I'm not on the committee, but that's my personal opinion.
Thanks, Chloe. Thanks, Max. Annual Farmland Preservation Summary. Good morning to you. Morning to you.
Good morning. How was everyone?
Are you gonna start off with the doom and gloom of Ann?
Some good news?
No, no, I, I have, well, depends, depends how you take it, I guess. There's always good news in farmland. All right, well, let's get started. This is the twenty twenty-three Farmland Annual Summary, and I know that there are um, a few new board members. Since my previous summary, so I wanted to begin just giving a very brief overview of what the program is, not going into too much detail. Uh, but just a brief overview. Uh, the program itself was inceptioned in Pennsylvania in nineteen eighty-eight, essentially just to slow the loss of uh, prime. Um, agricultural land uh, to non-ag development. Uh, every year, the state sets aside. A certain amount of money they allocate it towards um, the program for all the counties that participate in their program. The past five years or so, they've allocated about forty million per year, fluctuates every year. I would say the past decade on average has probably been anywhere from like thirty to thirty-five million. But in the past few years, it's been up just a little bit. Um, MPA is a national leader in farmland preservation. As you can see by this breakdown right here. Um, six thousand three hundred and thirty-six farms have been preserved, along with six hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-five acres. Um, and it's even more if you include the county only preserved farms, uh, those aren't included in these numbers here. Uh, so farmland preservation in Montgomery County specifically, our program was inceptioned in nineteen ninety with our first farms being preserved in nineteen ninety-two. And today, Montgomery County has preserved a little over a hundred and eighty-five farms on ten thousand five hundred acres. Uh, and this includes a wide range of farms, dairy farms, equestrian centers, farmers raising all different kinds of livestock. Christmas tree farms, fruits, vegetables, you name it, we have it. Uh, quick eligibility for the farmland program. Uh, we are funded by the state, county, and sometimes the municipality. It's not a requirement for the municipality. To uh, to kick in some money, but we do request it for each farm that we preserve. Um, to call, to qualify for state funding, a property needs to join their local ASA. Um, contain at least fifty percent of high-quality ag soils as they deem classes one through four. And be at least thirty-five acres or have ten farmed acres and be adjacent to an already preserved farm. Or have ten acres and grow crop, crop unique to the area. Uh, to qualify for a county-only funded purchase, a property can be less than thirty-five acres, but they do need to have that minimum of ten farmed acres on the property. So applying to the program, the deadline is February first of each year, and it is free to apply. Uh, basically, what happens when the applications come in, we sit down and we rank and score all of these applicants based off the criteria that we have. Um, once that happens, we get everything together for the farm board. They decide which properties we are going to pursue with appraising. Uh, the appraisers go out typically in March or April, conduct their appraisal, send them back to us. Uh, and then we sit down and we have a farm core of all the farms that we appraised that year, usually in late May. And then uh, at our June Farm Board meeting is typically when um, the farm board then decides which farms we would actually like to make offers to. Um, when the farmers get that offer, they have three options. They can accept the offer, they can reject the offer. Or they can get a second appraisal done at their own expense. If they choose to get the second appraisal done. Um, and it comes back a little bit higher than what we offered, we essentially just meet in the middle ground. Uh, we have to use a state formula, we plug in all the numbers, different values, things like that. Um, and it usually comes to be just about right in the middle between the two appraisals. Um, if they do accept the offer, whichever one it may be, it's really just a lot of paperwork after that, but eventually the property does get officially surveyed. To determine the actual acreage that's being uh, preserved. And then it's just a matter of going to settlement. Uh, the whole process from beginning to end takes anywhere from about a year and a half to two years from application to settlement. Um, and what we actually offer is right there in the middle of that slide right there. It's the market value of the property. Subtracting the value of the property as if it were preserved, so just the value of the land. And then we pay that difference, which would be the conservation easement value. So, why apply to the program? What are some of the benefits? I have a bunch here listed. Uh, first and foremost, it's financial help. It's an investment to a lot of these farmers. A lot of, a lot of our farmers have to work outside of farming. Um, it's not really a huge income generating, uh, you know, uh, job anymore. Um, so this financial help that we're able to provide these farmers uh, goes the wrong way with paying off debt. Um, upgrading their equipment, anything of that nature. Um, it's also gonna assist the lenders with estate planning and it helps keep farms in the family. Land stays in private ownership. Uh, the preserved farm is less expensive for the next generation to buy, which is huge moving forward. Um, in this new generation coming up that's looking to purchase these farms, especially in this area of Montgomery County. Uh, land is, of course, very, very expensive right now. Um, undeveloped land requires less expenditures for future, future infrastructure and utilities. Um, it's open space at the end of the day, so it helps with stormwater habitat, wildlife, things like that. Uh, farms are gonna contribute to the county's economic and sustainability efforts. Farms-to-table aspect is huge. Uh, the local farms will decrease the food miles. It's gonna decrease all the traveling that needs to get done. Uh, which is essentially going to limit the carbon footprint. It's going to reduce food insecurity by providing the local healthy food. And of course, it's just overall great for the local economy. So, now getting into the actual accomplishments of twenty twenty-three. Uh, we did not preserve any farms in twenty twenty-three for the first time in program history. However, do not worry. Two farms were already preserved in twenty twenty-four. That is two of the five farms that accepted our offers from the twenty twenty-two round. Uh, eight farms accepted our offers last year, totaling three hundred and twenty-three acres. And we had eleven applicants this year. So the program is in great shape. We did not preserve any last year. Um, that's because the state has been a little bit slow with sending us their funds compared to previous years. Um, a couple of farmers are, we're getting conservation plans written by the NRCS. Unfortunately, the conservation plan writer for the NRCS decided to retire in the middle of those plans, so there was a little bit back up with that. Um, and then another farmer, uh, it took him a couple of months to actually decide. He wanted to exclude acreage, but we were going back and forth. On what acreage he actually wanted to exclude, so that held things up just a little bit. Um, so no farms preserved, but the program is in great shape. Uh, we also held our second annual farmers gathering event. Um, this was in August of last year, along with the August in the previous year. Um, it's essentially just an open networking event for all farmers or farm owners in the county. It's just a night to come out. And uh, we provide refreshments, food, beverages, things like that, give a little presentation, offer guidance. Uh, resources, materials, grants, anything that's available to the farmers. It's free for them just to mingle. Um, it's an open event from five thirty to seven thirty roughly. People obviously start shuffling out a little bit before then. But that was started because our Keep Farming, Keep Farming Conference that was held every four or five years, I forget what it was. Was canceled due to COVID. So we didn't actually hold events for several years, and I was receiving a lot of feedback from the community. Looking for something. looking for something that they could do. And I sat down with some constituents from the farming community. And it was decided that they kind of just wanted to come out, get together, have some fun. Didn't really want something educational. They just wanted to get together, have that sense of community again, so that's what, you know, sparked the interest of doing this gathering event two years ago. And then there was just overwhelming positive feedback from that event, so we're just deciding to kind of do this annually, I guess, until interest dies down. Um, PFPA conference, uh, Ann and I attend that usually twice per year. They hold one in the spring and the fall. And it's just legislative updates for uh, uh, Pennsylvania and the, and the PFPA. Uh, and then there's, they also hold roundtable and panel discussions, just discussing any type of current topics in the farming community. Um, or anything like that. We also put on our farmers' outfits and go to the Montgomery County Farm Banquet every year, held in October. Uh, it's a little three, four-hour dinner event. They have some live music and everything. It's a business meeting for the Farm Bureau, but then they turn it into uh, you know, something with live music and just an event.
Still in traffic or?
Uh, the Frank Cooney Heritage Center, they do a restaurant, yeah. So, we have some fun. Sometimes the music is pretty farmy for us. Oh, they, they sing a golf, they sing a golf, growin' potatoes. Yeah. And then on top of that, uh, everything else we do every year, uh, the inspections, uh, and the newsletters we write. Uh, and lastly, one thing I'm kind of excited about is this Field to Family Food and Agro Tourism map that I have been working on. And Rob was just gonna steal this real quick. What are you doing? And uh, if we can. Can you copy? Yeah. Don't click the link, cause it's been crashing.
I have a bunch of questions. I'll ask you while you're standing there.
Sure.
Um, do we uh, consider the issues of potential trail easements prior to, you know, uh, taking an uh, easement on these?
Yeah.
Uh, because it, we've, we've come into the, the issue where, once you put the easement for um, farming, this perpetual, you know, agricultural easement, you can't get a trail if you need a linkage.
Yeah. Uh, so that was actually a hot topic just this year at our February board meeting. Um, we've had a couple of properties in just the past year or two run into this problem. Um, and they are in the process of being preserved. And the township had plans of running trails through the properties, but obviously the property owners don't necessarily want that, so. It was, it, it seemed like it was the farm board's decision to, I don't wanna say stay out of it, out of the discussion, but um, essentially take it as a case-by-case basis, and we do inform the townships of the farms that were going after preservation. Um, and if there are any type of trail um, plans to let us know.
Really important thing.
Yeah.
You know, but, but we, there are also the consideration, you have to have some money behind it so that the farm, we're not asking the farmer to lose value by uh, doing that.
Right.
So that, that's one question. Do you want me to keep going with my questions?
Yeah, sure.
They only have three.
The farmer may not want a trail.
Right.
On the edge of his farm field.
But.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I don't mean to say that we should be, you know, and remaining the farm, but I think we should bring it up, and if they get money for it, sometimes they're a little, you know, cause what they're getting out will be the thing.
Absolutely, but and I think uh, the fact that this is a little municipality know that we're uh, in discussions with the farmer about purchasing, and I hope that the municipality can at that point say, hey, we have plans.
Right, but the municipality also then has to understand that they may have to ahead of time if there are farms in their community that they might want to have a, a, a mechanism to purchase those easements. So that's one, one question. Wow, that's right. See, down here, I think he's doing a really good job with this project, do you not, Ann? And he, he oversight of this program has been real good.
Yeah, he really does enjoy this work.
Yeah, and I was gonna ask him if he enjoyed it, because he seems to enjoy it, and I think the people that he's working with really do recognize that. You know, and I think that's really important. Wanted to ask him when he comes back in. How many, you know, number one, are we seeing younger farmers? One of the things that we want this program is, is based on is in fact, they want to remove development rights from these farms, that they would be more accessible financially, or young farmers who may not have the finances to come in. So that's important, because the age of our farmers, particularly farmers, it's like.
Oh, we know the young farmers coming in are typically family, or are they?
Well, that was the question you can ask him, whether they're.
They do cancel um, youngish people, I think, apply this year, but I think we're also seeing um, people who, who give the appearance of being wealthy, I don't know. For sure. But, but you know, people who are coming in with extra income and buying a property as a second career eventually. We're seeing a little bit of everything, I guess.
And the problem there is, they may not understand that the easement is not an open space easement to keep the property.
Right, right, so as you always say.
You need to continue to farm that property. There's a proactive aspect to the easement.
Right, I was always told, Dulcie, this is not an open space program. Agricultural production, which is important, so that got answered.
So Steve, what's this uh, map?
Yes, so this is a, a map I've been working on, and it's highlighting all of um, the farm, I shouldn't say all the farms, but a lot of the food stands, farmers markets, things like, things like that. I'm calling it a food and agritourism map, because what you can do is this is gonna be made available to the public, and it's certainly still on its design stage. Um, but you can see all the green dots, green dots represent something that the farm has, whether it's food or some type of agritourism, entertainment. So what you can do here is there's several different options. Um, up here is a filter button, and it's going to show all of the options that you can filter for here. So if you wanted to go and you wake up Saturday morning and you say, I wanna go pumpkin picking today. Um, you can type in right here, pumpkin picking, hit apply, and it's going to automatically sort all the farms that you can go to um, in the county for this. Um, same thing with business type. Uh, if you wanted to see all of the farmers' markets in the county, same concept. So it's gonna be the same concept for anything you type in and filter and sort for.
And like, I always wanted like, uh, things for dinner, you know, I want corn, I want leaf of greens.
Yeah.
So you can stop on the way to picking up the kids.
Exactly.
And get, I mean, that's what you need to have.
Yeah, exactly. Um.
Processed or unprocessed?
Probably processed.
I can, uh, I, I, I can see about making that edit just for you, Stephen, so. Uh, and then here in the search, the search button, you can also just search directly for a certain farm. It can be an address. Uh, it can be the farm's name. So if you wanted to go uh, over here. You know, looking for Christmas trees, you can search for any type of tree farm that we have. It's gonna bring you right to it. Okay. Uh, the home button is gonna bring you right back to the base map of the map, and then automatically.
Is this beta or is this?
This is certainly still beta. It's not a finalized version. A lot of design options still happening.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
All the data is kind of there.
Yeah, exactly.
Finessing it.
Yes. Um, so this will actually automatically find the route for you. If you just wanted to go from one farm to the other, or your house to one of the farms. And you can essentially just click these buttons, and it'll load and automatically pop, populate the best route for you.
If those farms sell their, their, their uh, products to who?
Uh, anybody, really. I mean, a lot of the, a lot of the farm, are you talking about just farm stands on the property, or?
They're, they're, they have crops. What do they do with those crops?
Well, if, if, if they're producing crops, like feed crops like hay, corn, soybeans, things like that, you know, they're getting outsourced to wherever. Um, sometimes a lot of the hay is just locally sold to equestrian farms or any type of maybe cattle or things like that. But when it comes to uh, soybeans or corn, uh, I'm not entirely sure where a lot of it goes. I'm not sure if it is sold locally or if it's maybe sold elsewhere. But in terms of the local produce, fruits, veggies, things like that, all that's locally sold, whether it be on the farm, at farmers' markets, directly to a lot of restaurants in the area. Uh, be a lot of the farms in this county are selling outside of the county. Yeah. Yep, and then as you can see here, if you just click to destinations, it'll give you the best route. There, you can print at the bottom. Um, and then you also have the total list of all of the farms here. Uh, that you can see. So if you just wanted to lift, list the farms and already knew the name of it, you can just click it, and it'll highlight on the map. You can zoom in right to it. Uh, you can sort, descending, ascending, things like that. So this is certainly still in its design stage. You know, we have to make everything look pretty and whatnot, but a lot of the data is already here. This is the basic functionality of it. Um, and it's essentially just being created to bring in tourism, not only in the county, but from outside of the county to our farms. Um, you know, to try and help them out, um, especially when it comes to the agritourism side of things, not necessarily um, just purchasing produce, but the agritourism side, uh, pumpkin picking, Christmas trees, uh, hayrides, corn mazes, all of that. Um, you know, we even highlight, uh, I think Freddie Hill Farms is on here. They're highlighted as a family fun center. So even, even venues like that, where, you know, we're trying to bring tourism to.
Do we have enough county money to um, buy the farms that we wanna buy?
Yes. Yeah, the county commissioners do a good job with allocating money every year. We do ask for varying amounts each year based off our predictions of how many applicants we might receive or how many we might make offers to the past, uh, the past three years.
Same.
What's up?
The formula for the state's same.
Um, they base their allocation off how much we allocate.
Yeah.
So yeah, the more we do, the more they're going to match it. Um, but we've had anywhere from about four to five million the past three years, Ann, something like that, four or five million total in spending anyway. Um, so I mean, we've been able to make offers to a lot of farms. A couple, a couple of years ago, we only made offers to a handful because two of the farms took up a lot, a lot of the money. Um, but yeah, no, we certainly have a lot of money to spend each year, which is, you know, my main goal of, you know, trying to get out and get as many, get as many applicants as we can to keep this money coming in.
There were a couple of years where we, our ask was very small because we had, we had excess capacity of money and not enough farms. Uh, of course, Steve got involved in uh, since then, um. Any other questions, Mr. Steve?
How, how is enforcement on the easement with new farm owners? Like, are they continuing to farm? When you were out of the room, man, had said, people, uh, second and third owners of preserved farms appear to be wealthy, appear to be um, not from a farming family perhaps. Are they farming the properties? Are you having any problem with enforcement?
Uh, just a, just a couple. Um, it's certainly a very minimal amount. Um, a lot of our landowners, especially the more wealthy ones, they don't farm themselves. They just lease it out. They might just live there, and then they lease it out, which is good, because the farmers already have their practices on the land, which is nice. Um, but there's, you know, a couple, a, a couple of properties right now that are in question that maybe have been fallow for a little bit now uh, that we have to kind of crack down on. But, I mean, in the overall grand scheme of things, you know, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of our farms follow the conservation plans, all the practices that are written. So, yeah, I mean, with a hundred and eighty-seven preserved farms, you know, two or three, you know, that might be a current problem anyway, you know, it's.
Steve, what's the penalty if you don't follow through the list then?
Um, we haven't really reached that point yet. A lot of the times, we just need to go out and give, it's, it's, it's more about giving them the resources, like this one, this one farm right now, they only want organic farming done on the land. And they aren't able to do it themselves anymore based off age and health conditions, things like that. So it's a matter of just trying to provide them the resource to find this organic farmer. Um, you know, if, if the problem persists and they're still not farming it for several years, you know, we can get the state involved and they kind of come in um, and, you know, get involved and try to maybe help them at first, but if they are still negligent and, you know, aren't farming land, um, I think technically it could be brought to court, but I'm not sure if something like that has ever happened in the state of Pennsylvania, let alone Montgomery County. Yeah.
Another question for Steve?
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, everyone. Steve, you're doing a great challenge.
Great man. Wish, you should really think through a marketing plan for that after it's ready to go public.
Yes, absolutely. No, that, that's definitely, uh, that's definitely a goal, and um, I'm hoping to have this ready and published by the summer. That way, you know, come farmers' market times and things like that, this is already available to the public. Um, you know, then we'll go from there.
Now, I'll mention every time I get a chance, I think the Farm Challenge, much like our Trail Challenge, where we encourage people to visit all the public farm and market markets and activities. That'd be great. Our last, well, last good night of it, board engagement discussion, which we had postponed until this month. From last month, so I'll give everyone a stop to get us started. Yeah, I'll lead off on this. Um, and Robert, you can add the, the, the agents.
Yeah.
Um, PowerPoint is the same as, uh, I gave a preview, limited time we had last month, and I think, I think I shared it, um. Quested. Uh, so that has not changed. So we're gonna take the, the deep dive into this, um, with the time we have, and I just wanna say upfront. Um, you know, this, this, this again stems from, uh, you know, you have varying comments or, and, and thoughts that have been shared, uh, over the last, you know, I'll just keep to the last three to four years, and it's, to type it in this role. Um, and, you know, always looking to maximize our time together and to make it beneficial for the agency as well as for the, the time that I, our board members all, all graciously put toward, uh, the planning commission. Um, as you know, you know, we've been through our agendas and our, and our items, you know, we have arranged, we don't have a heavy load of formal or official actions. Um, I would say for one reason or another, um, those were maybe more heavy in the past. Um, but uh, I think a lot of information comes out of these, and with our planning work, with the projects, uh, we benefit from hearing your feedback, and I think we can continue to make that even more effective. I'm coming at this from kind of a, a moderate or centrist position. I, 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 I don't, you know, we could go overboard and, and have all the ideal, uh, uh, ideas and, and things, but, uh, new, new actions put in place. Um, but I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel or overturn the apple cart to get all, uh, um, metaphors, uh, or similarly done next. Um, sorry. So I'm rambling. Uh, anyway, I, so I feel that, uh, there are a few things we can do. We have some ideas we wanna bring out and discuss with you um, today. And uh, see what you think, see which ones are worth uh, uh, developing uh, this year or uh, or not. Or if there's other ideas uh, that you may have. And we, also, the final point I wanna make is, um, we greatly, you know, respect, you know, our board members come from different uh, backgrounds and different, um, you know, obligations in life. We assume everyone is very busy. Um, so, you know, again, we wanna respect the, the amount of time that you have to put into this. You know, obligations in life. We assume everyone is very busy. Um, so, you know, again, we want to respect the, the amount of time that you have to put into this. And try to, uh, uh, keep it, um. Reasonable, um, to continue this, uh, where I think it's a really great relationship. Uh, that's it. Look, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna go through, there's only three slides after the title, um, and I think I'll. If you're okay with it, I'll spend, we'll, we'll go through, um, the ideas fully, um, rather than go through them all and come back. And this first one is the probably the most extensive or, um, worth. Worth of discussion or our biggest effort, uh, to put in, so, uh, we'll jump into it. This idea is really stemming from the, what we thought, most thought was a very successful experience in December with our comprehensive plan. Workshop, uh, where we had breakout, um, meetings with, uh, groups integrating both board member and staff. Uh, to discuss, uh, specific issues. Um, that could feed into, uh, as we gear up for the vision, uh, of the comprehensive plan. Uh, so the idea was how could we do maybe, you know, more of that type of activity and what purpose would it best be suited for? So the idea here is, is doing that on an annual basis. Um, or it's making it issue based, uh, but I think the key value here, um, the other one was suited towards the conference plan. With that and how we consider this, the real concern is making sure that, you know, we're not just. Having a great experience and having good conversation, but that it, it does lead to something that it does benefit, that we can take that. And, uh, uh, in, in the, in the December case, uh, uh, give us more perspective and greater input on the comprehensive planning as we develop that program. Uh, for going forward. So the idea here I think was really, um, seizing on the work program aspect. I think that is an area where I, we've, we've, uh. Overhauled the work program process and, and development and, and presentation of. Uh, to you over the last, uh, three years, and I think everyone agrees, uh, fairly successfully. But I also think the one, the one element of that that I think we could do better on is, is getting more feed, knowing board sentiments, um, prior and, and not leading into the. The end result and where you're seeing it and then you have, you might have comments, but it's hard to implement those if, if they're, uh, you know, worthy of making changes just because of. Process and where, where at the end is January, we gotta, gotta get, you know, start doing the work. Um, so the idea here is maybe having these, uh, discussions could lead, it could, could spur ideas, could impact and influence. The development of the work program, which for staff really takes place, um. In recent years, I would say, you know, October, November, the, the hot months for that. And then, you know, with December, we're trying to put everything together and get it pretty all of. The work done to make it, to bring it to your, your eyes. Um, so I put on here July or September target, um, my first inclination was September would be. Uh, the timing I'd prefer, but I worry that might be a little too close to, um, again, the staff work and may, and maybe July gives us a little more. Uh, breathing room to assess and, and, and take, get the takeaways from those works in the workshops. Um, so open to either. I think the downside of July is, uh, maybe it's a little less reliable and everyone being, you know, someone being on vacation or whatnot. Um, but obviously we take August off, uh, uh, usually and, and that would be difficult to. I thought about adding August back in if that was worthy of suggesting, but it's really hard to get people and, and. Even just a staff standpoint, I'm sure board members as well, uh, our most popular month for being able to take time off. Um, so anyway, that, those are the choices there. Um, and then the, the last bullet there, uh, which I also think about. Small group or whole board discussion. So the, the December example was the small group model. Um, I, I feel that, that. The real benefit of that is A, it allows us to, to bring staff into it. Um, and, and that was one of the takeaways I got from, from December. Um, people talking to each other, they don't want to get an opportunity, getting to know each other and getting to hear other perspectives. Uh, and also an opportunity for everyone to get feedback into it. Um, that's hard to do in this setting, um, really in, in a whole board, you know, we're really focused around this table. Um, we can, you know, have staff on, on outside, but it, it's harder to really, um, make that happen. And the discussion itself, you know, can be difficult. Not everyone's as. Um, you know, the more people you have, uh, you, you're getting to hear the dominant, uh, voices, uh, more often. And it's just not as much time to hear from everyone. So. I think the small group really does hold, hold the most benefit. The, the real challenge of it though is, you know, you have multiple. Like we did in December, multiple sessions, you have maybe the same topic and different people involved at different times. So synthesizing that and getting everything, uh, out, that, that's really the biggest. Uh, downside to that, but. I feel, I feel we, we, we did it in December. Um, and I think, I think we could probably manage it, uh, as well. This purpose. So, um. Let me open it up and, and the, hear any, uh, instant thoughts or feedback just on this element.
You say you wanted to go through them all or?
I, I thought we, I thought we'd just go one by one. Um, some of them are less, you know, the significant discussion and everything. Or we, it's, you know, if you want to.
Okay, I'm a proponent. Um. Of the smaller groups, I think it was more intimate. I think people tended to open up. You know, to learn that as opposed to, you know, when you have somebody like Steve Klein, I mean, he, yeah. He runs the show, so. Here, here, I'm sorry, Steve. Um, yeah, but, but I mean, you know, some people become intimidated in a public setting. So in a, in a more, you know, smaller group, private setting, everybody's opening up. I, I do think that's more of a benefit to the staff and obviously it's a benefit to himself as. As a board member, because I hear what I don't hear in.
Yeah.
Other thoughts?
I agree, Bob. I like the small group setting. Um.
I guess my question is, does, does the idea of yearly workshop that wrapped around the burger hand that kind of, that kind of, uh, format? Um, is that something that's interesting? Along the lines of providing some board engagement that we're talking about. So I guess more so, I mean, yes, a small group. Idea is. Does, your, your thoughts on small or whole board, small group or whole board is important, but. What, what about the, the proposal and Scott's proposal you hear about the yearly workshop?
Yeah, Steve, I, I, I think that's an interesting tie-in. I really liked the workshop that was held in December. Obviously it circulated around the comprehensive plan. And thinking about implementing that type of group meeting on an annual basis, I think tying it to the work program makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Um, I do feel like being still relatively new board member as compared to others. I appreciate, uh, you know, the, uh, work plan presentations that we get in January, but I think to your point, Scott, it's done at that point. Um, and so, you know, getting ahead of that and, you know, being a part of the discussion as it's really just being. You know, in its infancy stages, uh, for the next year, you know, I think, you know, hopefully, you know, the board, you know, working alongside the staff, you know, would be able to. Uh, you know, integrate some thoughts and ideas and, um, you know, help. You know, I, I know it's always a challenge, you know, what do we prioritize and, you know, having that discussion and dialogue, I think, you know. Would give the board the opportunity to input, you know, give their input in that process. And I expect it will also help staff to be able to kind of talk through those things and get new, potentially new ideas spots. So I like it around the work program and obviously I think it could, you know, be flexible if there was something, you know, as we continue in the comprehensive plan. Maybe a year it really makes sense to focus on, you know, maybe a different topic or, um, something more specific, but I think, you know, making it a part of the work program. Uh, you know, kind of in it, like I said, in its infancy stage for the next year, I think makes a lot of sense.
And I would, just to clarify what I didn't say before, I, I would still hope to, you know. Yeah, keep it issue based so that, you know, uh, we're, you know. At those ideas, those things, this is really a problem that we haven't really looked at or, or we could, could, uh, you know, uh, dive into or do something of benefit to the public. Um. That that can come out in this and then that can be, you know, and again, while preface, looking out for staff, you know, we're not looking for twenty new projects each year. Uh, we do try to, you know, keep it moving and keep new projects coming, but obviously we're managing a heavy workload.
It's really mine. It's, it's almost eleven, so the alarm might go off.
Yeah.
And we're just gonna hit new for the tribe network.
That's fine. That's fine. I'm gonna share. We want to start.
Is, is, is once a year or another?
See, I'm sitting here thinking, I, I'm sorry, I'm wondering, is. Does it make sense to, is, first of all, is May too early in the year? With a follow-up in September? After concepts are discussed in May? And then they have a time to percolate and develop and. Generate and then a follow-up. Conversation in September. As the plans start to begin to take over. Forming. I mean, is, are the board comments? We haven't done this, nothing will attest, but are the board comments valuable enough? In that process to really help guide staff?
Well, I think what, what you were saying, Scott, that we would. We, we've, since we're trying this out, this is, I, I mean, the things that come before us are things that are new. Things that are challenging. I mean, we don't want to have to sit through everything that you do, but those are, so. What John's saying may be. A way to think about it, because. Things that are new, things that are challenging, throw out the ideas and then the staff comes back. And synthesizes that and then this is what we were considering putting in and then it could be tweaks at the end. I also want to be careful, two things. Number one, that it's not too overwhelming for the staff for the time and the energy you have to put in. But the upside of that is we get as board members. Um, we get to know the staff in a different way, which I think is really important for all the other issues that we discuss. The ability of, um, the board to be integrated and understand the staff, for the staff to understand if they're comfortable coming to us, so that gives me.
Yep. I, I, you know, what, for, for me, clarification would be, you know, there's a, there's a general. Concept conversation in May. Now allow the staff to develop and then in September it would be maybe some of those. Topics that they're having problems with, you know, I don't, I would not suggest we revisit everything all over again. You know, that to me seems like it's a counterproductive, but if there are topics that staff is maybe looking for clarification or struggling with. Maybe the board could provide input as a follow-up to that.
Others?
And it would be staff selected.
Yeah.
Agenda items.
Give ideas a little.
I, I think what Nicole said makes a lot of sense, I think, having managed and participated in any workshops and. Um, my, my fear is there're always, there's always sort of like a randomness to it. So I think it just needs to, it needs to be clear about, and it's not just that it leads to the work program, but like. Like how do the timelines match up? Like, like what, what is it in, in your litany of inputs? Like. Where does it sit? How does it relate back? Like, how do, how do we, how do we sort of close feedback loops? That kind of thing, like, I just, like. I think it's always good to sort of talk these things out in, in sort of like, uh. In a collaborative setting, but I think it's just, again, being new, like, how does it fit with all the other work? That you're doing, Scott? How does it not like, you know, throw any wrinkles in that would delay staff? On a project like you don't want to, you don't want to add unnecessary time to work that you have. So it's just like, what's the, like, how are you structuring the workshops? So that it's like, it's, it's not like, uh, it's not putting a speed bump down and it's just. Helping, helping, you're helping the staff kind of keep.
It's always going to be an obstruction.
Yeah.
You know, you're trying to get move, moving along, what more layer of.
Yeah.
Stuff is like, we, we don't want, there, there's no need to add bureaucratic layers of delay into work that.
So, so along those lines, I mean. We've had these conversations about the work program every December or sometimes weeks into January. Um. You know, a vast major, a vast majority of the work that the planning commission does is programmed. Is year in, year out, because there are certain things that the planning commission is obligated to. Do, produce, whatever it might be. And then there's a smaller percentage of the work that. Planning Commission staff fills in with initiatives, model workplaces, whatever it may be involved in. You know, project to countywide and so on and so forth. So I think the, the key here is to recognize the majority of work that the planning commission does and that, that work needs to continue. That work is vital to the county, vital to the municipalities, but then there's that smaller group of. Of, of, of time that, that we would be, I would assume we'd be focusing on in this workshop, not walking into this workshop to try to reinvent what the planning commission does. Um, so I think to that end, I think it could be. It can, it could be, um, focused and I think it could be, um. Communicated in the beginning of that workshop period that. We just can't, if. If there's room for three, we can't. Develop ten. Ideas. We need to. Synthesize all our ideas and then come to some kind of understanding of what the staff thinks is, is vital and then what the board. Input focuses on what three of the. Ten ideas that may be sitting out there, but we can't just say, let's, let's do them all. So.
Let, let me ask, let me follow up, uh, and, and ask you. Backs. I think, I think there's, I think there's two, two approaches we could have and this is coming clear in this discussion. One, one is I think related to what you said, like three or ten. That, that's where we're getting into kind of like managing the output, like what, what are the, what are the new? What are we meaning to talk about? The new projects? I had a little more, uh, uh. Broader or, uh, less defined or less concrete approach to thinking. Just like in, in December, it was kind of a, we had the structured topics, uh, and questions to guide conversation, but it was very open-ended and they could go in, in various ways. So. And, and we, we can, I, we, I can pivot certainly, but. The thought I had coming into this was it would still be in that vein where we're talking about what is pressing, what do we know, what do we think maybe? Isn't addressed or could use more time spent. And then just taking that general thought. And that would be more of a, more of a staff process at that point. We could come back and, and revisit with the board, but if we were a staff process, oh. You know, we, we talked about this and that really hasn't been on our plate or we haven't, uh, you know, put into that channel of, of that issue. Um, let's, you know, if, if we're looking for a new project, let, you know, let's, let's hone in on that and see what we can do and then come back and, and run that by you. Um, rather than you thinking the workshop where it is, we're going to come out of it with these, you know, five new projects or something. Um. So I, you know, I am. It, it's, it's, I don't have, I don't have, uh, again, the concrete nature of exactly what it is. I don't have it spelled out for you, so I, I could go either way and I'm, um. But I think those are the two.
Right.
Kind of roads or lanes who, who that we're. Both thinking of right now.
Well, let's, let's, I mean, we can circle back. Let's move on to the other two and see where you're headed and then. You know. Just because we go to the next slide doesn't mean we can't come back and discuss this, this idea, just or in conjunction with some of the other ideas you're given.
I've had it.
Other questions, Steve?
Yeah.
Um, should, should we sit the staff members down and say, we're thinking about doing this and what's your input? You know, and they don't have to sign it or they could just send, send you a note. Or they can all can agree, but just get their input before they. They were all giddy as, at, you know, at the end of, of what we had in December.
Are you, are you talking about like the different ideas here or?
Well, what, what.
Related to a work program? You know, work program workshop?
Probably both. I mean, you know, what, what, what would the staff like to say when dealing, you know, on a one-on-one with the board members?
I'm assuming. This is a product of internal conversation, staff.
Yeah, more so at management. We haven't, uh, had as much in, in that, you know. Filters up through the sections, you know, that we can talk to their staff. We have a staff meeting on Friday and I think I'll, I'll be addressing this as well and get, get some input and if we have. I would love for you to have some staff back and sitting behind us, um, if there are any comments, uh, be thinking, uh, if you want to contribute. Uh, welcome that too. Um, but yeah, that's kind of. All right, well, yeah, so let's, uh, go to the next slide. Uh, oh, I have, thank you. So, uh, there's two ideas on this slide. The first is, uh, dedicated section spotlight throughout the year. Um, I'm. A little bit ambivalent. I think this is, I'm, I think I'm asking you if you see value in it. Um, there's a. You know, there's, there's a burden to each, each section, kind of putting together their program, but it is really literally once a year that each section would engage. We'd sprinkle them throughout the year. Uh, but this would be, you know, and you see listed there, the, the major planning, um, sections, you know, and. Six are listed, so essentially I think every other month. Um, yeah, we dedicate a, a. This, this decent length, uh, on the agenda. For, uh, hearing what's happening in that section, um, covering things that may not have risen to their own agenda items previously or in the future. Um, but against, you know, keeping that dialogue, keeping that. Rather than having every year, you know, at the work program calendar or whenever saying this is all the stuff we're doing across. You get to hear a little more in-depth and get, and have, have back and forth, um. Uh, with, with those sections, uh, for a dedicated period of the agenda. So. Saying it right now, I'm actually more, more increasing my, my, uh, uh, enthusiasm for this idea, but. Saying it right now, I'm actually more more increasing my my uh uh enthusiasm for this idea, but. Again, uh any thoughts on that?
Well, as opposed to, you know, it's when we hear the work planning speaking.
Yes. Right.
Other thoughts on? Maybe it's good to give um staff kind of like a, like a constitution piece. Are you thinking that's the full word together or are you also thinking that's a small?
That one I would, I would say the full word, yes.
And it would be an agenda item throughout the year.
Yeah.
Different. Well, I I think that's, that that may be something that allows. The stuff that's under the radar that may may, you know, be a critical but not urgent and that we don't hear about.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I think by nature, just the dedicated agenda items, they may be very heavy in. Two or three of the planning areas and maybe a few others, just, you know, by nature, haven't gotten as much attention for several months. And this kind of lays that out to give that opportunity for, yeah, maybe things that, you know, aren't making the agenda. Uh by themselves, projects that are working on initiatives, whatever. But having that overview, you know, gives that opportunity for the board and staff in that particular section, the opportunity to interface and staff to share what they're doing. Cause it's value, it's very valuable.
That encourages creativity on our our sections to, you know. To hit, here's your, 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 your forty five minutes, what do you wanna do with it? You know, in addition, we kind of just updating you. Is there like a specific angle you wanna take this year or or do something uh great around it?
Let them make it their own.
Yeah, absolutely.
Would we really have to go from county planning?
I was gonna say the transportation.
I think it's, I mean, I think it's a good idea, but but the only question I would have is what, what are we not then discussing? In place of having to provide time for this every other month and if, you know, how do you, how do you balance that? To make sure that we're forcing this in.
Well, it's it's for Scott, when you go to do the agendas, I mean, sometimes we hear it in our agenda meetings, are you?
Yeah.
Are you trying to fill the agenda or do you always have things that don't get on agenda?
Yeah, I it varies and I don't wanna, I I hate, I. It's a pet peeve, but like I I don't wanna feel like, oh my gosh, I don't have enough on the agenda and at some point I feel like that every month and then I realize, oh, we do have a lot. But.
Steve's comments.
Right.
Um but but yeah, I I I do think in in thinking about this, I do think it could be fit and I I think. We're at a.
I mean, this is, this is this is six agenda items, which is really six months, cause you're not. Chances are you're not doing two of these on the same, on the same month, so this is six. You know, we have eleven, one of them is is the Montgomery Awards. Um and then there's another tour, so you know, you're down to nine. So you're, you're, you know, and these are probably, some of these I could see being long discussions.
Yes.
Yeah, they're not gonna be short, you know, quick conversations. But then again, at the same time, they also, some of these would also cover other items that may come up.
Yeah.
The rest of the year that would get locked into this. I mean, look, I think it's a great idea to have uh have a conversation regarding each of the sections. Um and seeing what they're doing or seeing the totality of what they're doing, you do have an idea what they're doing. Um I guess the question I would have is, do we do them all in one year, every year, or do we do it? Rotate it to three, one year, three another year and rotate it that way, you just because, I mean, some of what. Each of these sections do are long term, long term projects and, you know, being able to follow them. Do we wanna follow them on a yearly basis? Do we wanna follow them on a? Every two years, you know, um something we think about.
Yeah, the way you just broke it down, I think, yeah, there is, you think there's a lot of time, but you start taking some things out, it is tighter.
It also takes pressure off your um section heads.
Yeah.
It's my, yeah, I mean, to have to put this together every year. So I think if this was an idea we were interested in, um and wanted to provide that kind of. That kind of back and forth with sections, um one I would say would be great, like. If you're doing any of the sessions that the members of that sections are here, because. Wouldn't want, just wanted to be the section chiefs, I would want it to be the staff that's involved in there because. I wanna hear what, not just the section chiefs, but also the 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 staff that they're working with, what they're working on, what they're thinking, so.
So so is this a, so is your vision that this is a for information only presentation? Or is this something that is built in interactive with the board?
I think it should definitely be interactive, but I mean.
Yeah, okay, just wanna clarify that. Yeah, there'll be a presentation about that, I understand that.
But I figure it's more of a back and forth and.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, so Steve, if I can just jump in with just a a thing just out more in towards discussion a little bit. I mean, we're talking about the specifics and they're good, but just as long as everyone remembers that. The purpose and the intent of the discussion overall is really to answer, how can the board? Get more plugged into, you know, life of planning in our county? And the policy of planning in our county, I mean, just recalling the conversations that's been had the last couple of years on this. That was what I thought I understood the words issue to be is, hey, you know, we come once a month. We listen to stuff, we kind of know what you're doing, planning vision, that's good, but we wanna, we wanna see how we can be more engaged in the life of planning. We want a policy of planning, I think these are some steps to do it, but we wanna be thinking of, that's the ultimate goal and do any of these. In their current form or in another form, help to achieve that.
Which probably is a good segue into the last. Yeah, um so we work, we tell we're in, we're handed to a specific topic or project that's being worked on.
Yeah, so uh yeah, the second bullet on here, um this is one I I I am really fond of. Uh and it's it's putting an emphasis on when we bring things to you uh as an agenda item. Uh that we we start to do that more in the right circumstances at the start of a project, kind of a kickoff. Um so uh uh I was jotting some notes about um some of the upcoming. New projects that we're we're starting over the next year, including um a two forty seven, most immediately. Uh a survey to municipalities on the two forty seven letters and interview process. Um official map guidance uh we'll be working on later this year. Countywide stormwater plan, EV vehicle planning and uh coordination, which we're we're also uh working on. But bringing that to you at the beginning and not like a, a full fledged, you know, detailed presentation in PowerPoint, but really. Here's our goals in this project, here's what we're trying to do, here's our immediate thoughts of of, you know, where we wanna take it. But then then hearing from the board at that level and and somebody might have a great point or a great insight um based on their their background. Um that would make its way into the process, so we could then make it part of part of the uh for that project part of that.
When you start a project, do you have internal kickoff meetings?
Yeah, I don't think it's a, it's 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 formalized in terms of every project starts the same way, I think it depends on who's running it and how, but. But there's, there's always a uh uh some sort of kickoff and, you know, it starts with, you know, maybe me talking to the manager. Usually around the work program in time about what we're talking about, but um. Yeah, it it varies, but I think it.
I will say the the design section, we've been pushing that there's always off, that it involves lots of pieces that need to be talked about in the timeline, putting it in our project. Some of the smaller projects, maybe not as much, but when we have anything larger, a comprehensive plan or anything.
Especially when it crosses the uh sections, which is most, many of most projects have been, you know, where we've been evolving.
Thoughts on this?
I like this a lot.
Yeah.
I think this will be uh, this is, in my view, very engaged board and staff. And a way we can help staff move forward with the project without getting in the way. Which is what none of us wanna do. Dan talked about a roadblock or a speed limit, we didn't wanna do that, we wanna help.
So, well, I'm sorry, other comments?
And last thing, I would exclude, you know, a lot of our community based projects like, you know, the Lancet Aquatic Transportation, we wouldn't necessarily. Put that in the, any more larger county wide.
My comment on this is, I would almost establish this, that's why I was asking the question. And including the entire board, because some board members may not be specifically interested or. Um want to provide or. Really need to provide any kind of input on a specific type of project. Um and if there was a kickoff, whether it's an internal kickoff, then the board could be. Somehow engaged in that process as opposed to it be something. Did I make sense there?
That that we would be involved internally if those two had a whole.
Correct.
That would be a bit more challenging, um honestly, I'd prefer to do it, keep it to the board meeting, just in terms of time and coordination and and all that. Um and you never know if there's a, something, maybe someone doesn't think they have a real stake in this, this, this project, but then there might be an element that pops up to that.
And scheduling for that and planning for that.
Yeah, or an idea that gets shared, like I I think everyone think. Everyone here I know thinks outside of us.
We've talked about, I mean, we've talked about this before, that, you know, instead of a project coming, instead of a. An initiative or a project or something that this, the staff is working on, that's more county wide than it is specific, so the community. Um is worked on, we wanted, instead of seeing it at the very end. And then providing feedback, we'd like to, I think the board has had the um. Uh the desire to be seeing some of the stuff earlier to provide some of that feedback and not. And thoughts from from our various uh experience, level of experience, um so. I think that's a good idea, I think, you know.
Steve, can I throw an idea out there maybe for the board to consider is?
Sure.
Like, when we do our meetings every month. Typically, we talk and I'll generalize a little bit, but we talk about products, right? We talk about the things we've released. Or the data we collected, we kind of talk about the things that we've done or or are doing. The sense that I've gotten from the board sort of implicitly is that you guys have wanted to talk more about policy, I think we saw that. In the small groups we had late last year, everyone seemed revitalized by talking about concepts and policies and ideas. And so maybe rather than, than bringing you guys into the the detail and the depth of. We have a kickoff meeting and, you know, say that you know what our timeline is and what our work tasks are. It sounds to me like maybe if we had a policy spotlight, every meeting or every other meeting where, where before we did a a a a. Deliverable, we did a long planning process, we talked to you guys about what some of the policies could be on that, we got your feedback on that, so that. When we have staff meet together, we start having our kickoff meeting, we can say, look, you know, Steve was concerned that uh, you know, if we're doing EV plan, that we're not talking about. DC fast chargers and, you know, and and John was concerned that that maybe there, that there might not be equitable, so that. We can distill that into our work project, our work or our scope, without dragging into details, but. You guys also have that opportunity every month, we talk about what this means and we can have that back and forth, like we did in December, but with larger, just as. One idea maybe get to that.
It's also a conversation about what's presented to us. Like, for instance, Dan, Dan presented the median uh. You know, there was a question about how many days were these? These uh, these houses on the market, what's the average? I mean, that's something in the future would be nice to see and I know we carry on. Especially that driven presentation that we get, a lot of times it carries on the same, so we wanna see the matrix one year a year. Um so, but even to some degree, some of the presentations, see sometimes. We have some thoughts as to other information that we'd like to see. And most likely have reasons for that, because we see it in whatever was it, if they, that would help us or. That's more, more relevant to what we're trying to analyze, you know, sometimes than just the, the that that's been presented.
Yeah, and I think where I'm headed in my mind, based on what you said, is in that case, it wouldn't be like. Ann says, here's this data report that we've, you know, put together, this is what it says. And then you guys respond and react to that, say, okay, well, next time, consider this and that, we have questions, but rather, before. That sort of thing you can get started, it's, hey, you know, this is the, we're gonna give you a an insight, kind of the data we collect, the type of things that we, we look for. And we can talk about what that means, what it might mean. And then out of that says, oh, well, you know, maybe we should be working on this and working on that, and then that, those thoughts inform how that product works going forward.
A little off on the scale here, like a data report is, I don't know if I wanna do like a kickoff meeting to a data report. Um I think taking the comments, we can see each one with your name in the next year.
I was choosing it as a word.
Yeah.
How we can put, how we can provide input on some of these projects, it's just.
Yeah.
Giving you an idea of something that we might be thinking of and what. You see as a, we'd be a nice tie in to your overall, to to what they're working on as opposed to. That's all.
With a quick example, um you're gonna be seeing a uh a plan in the next month, couple months, uh the aviation plan.
Right.
Uh you probably know nothing about it, you might, maybe, hopefully you saw the work program at some point.
Yeah.
Um but math section and I just saw that the draft. And it's impressive, there's a ton of, ton of information, there's a policy discussion, there's a lot of things that, you know, just. You know, we we got three or four airports, um three, um and. Yeah, we just don't think about them a lot, but but for some people, they think, they do think about and they are important. Um that would have been a great kick, we kickoff, when I started, would have been, I think immensely valuable and someone. Having seen the report, I I think they, they covered it all quite a bit, there might have been something or some angle to it. That one of you might have thought or, you know, or known from your community, if you have an airport. Um that would have been great, great for them to know and they could have uh uh expanded off of it. Um so I think that that's, that's what we're trying to do with this, um.
But I just wanna clarify for you Scott, as well as the board, just to build on that, that in my head, my idea is that. Even if we're not doing an airport policy plan, you know, to to make that a topic on there and say, hey. Board, we want to make sure that you understand what airport planning is, make sure you understand what our airports are. You know, a little bit about how they function, we'll tell you what we know, we have a special on that, maybe out of that comes. You guys start to 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 co- coalesce around certain policies, whether they're very specific. Or whether they're just general, you know, general could be, hey, we like our airports, we wanna preserve these. Or we hate our airports and they're a nuisance for people and 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 you shouldn't be strongly defending it, like. That type of stuff engages you, helps us to understand what you're thinking, and if we are doing a specific product. Helps to inform that product at the start, which is what we've just been talking about as well, is how we get your input there at the beginning of things, so. Might cover a couple. Yeah, that's an idea.
Good on that. The last three are very low stakes and and just uh process things more, where's the, one would be to uh. Uh notify the board when we have an RFP that uh is gonna be going out and there, with every RFP, there's a review committee. Um it could be three to five people, um it's normally county staff for the most part. But I don't see why, if there's, and again, this would be volunteer, um not obligated, not every RFP needs a board member involved, but if there's one that does. Speak to, you know, your background or that you think you, and you'd like to provide input uh or be on that process. Then we wanna make that uh available, uh so that's just a matter of communicating what's on, what's coming out. As they respond as they want to or don't. Uh and then accessibility for board members, participate publicly, that's doing a better job on our part.
Yeah.
On uh when we have these press conferences, ribbon cuttings, other other events. Um making sure you at least have the opportunity to participate if you want.
And I'd like to put that, when, when you're going before the board of commissioners with something, I would like to know when that is. And even if it's short notice, one of us might wanna be there just as a face in the crowd, so that they get to see us.
A friendly face?
A friendly face, but that they get to see us and they understand that's me you are.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh certainly, um we we're struggling with getting time on the agenda these days, um but, but I agree. Um and then finally, uh easy one, I, and this starts with us, I I think. Bios from from board members and that the purpose is so that we actually know your background, you know, some do, some don't. Um but I don't think we have actively made that available to just all the staff. Uh and I, and we'll start that off with, depending on the question, so there's more than just a. What we have, I think on our website now is like a two sentence background and um, put a little more resume essentially. Um that's, those are, yeah, um. Circling back, so you know, the the uh those first three, I think were the ones of substance, the first two slides, um. And and hearing this discussion and whatnot, you know. Does anyone, I'm not, I'm not saying yes or no, does anyone get a sense that, well, when we talk to those first two? Does that lessen the need for the first, the big one, the big workshops, or do you see this all still being? Benefit beneficial to get them.
I understand.
I think he's asking here if we, if you, if we went through the process, like we've seconded to, which is the. Sections and being engaged in projects early on, do we need to be? Do we need to have a workshop about formulating the smaller percentage of, smaller slice of pie that the. Planning Commission is developing for the work program to follow here. That's, I think that's, yeah.
So, to me, that would also then mean consequently, do, do we have the workshops to be placed? You could, you could do one of the, one of the other, but maybe not both, right?
And is there any benefit in saying this is, this is a testing year to see if doing one thing? One thing, said, hmm, was that enough? Okay. We need to adapt it.
That's maybe one. There's nothing sense in spelling it.
So there's going to be, I think there's going to be a lot of trial and. There's going to be a lot of trial and error in this, and I don't. I guess I don't mind that as long as we don't get in the way of the staff's.
Right.
Uh, work planning, what they're doing, so. I could go either way on this, because I think over time. We will distill down to what is really meaningful to us and the staff.
And I I want to be thoughtful on the pressure we put on.
If we can supplement it, work that they're already doing and generating instead of adding to it, then I think. That doesn't make sense.
Right, so which one is that? Which one of these options best fits that?
We need to know until we try it.
Yeah.
I think that's the intent of all of, you know. It is is to, is to accomplish, is to not supplement, not.
Correct.
Uh, create more.
So go back to your first slide. Now the second one.
That's the first.
Yeah. But, well, yeah, I'm I'm sorry.
Who wants to see the next one, go, sir?
I actually like this, uh. My fear of the work program is. Yeah, my fear of the work program is. I want to get bottomed down and. Discussing. The part of the work program. Program only to the degree that maybe we talk about how some things are. Sit sized or presented um in that, in that large portion. I think the, if you keep thinking about this. Kind of get. A flavor for what each of these sections are doing, not just the. The whole group of that section as and as opposed to just the one person or maybe two people. You know, and some of these are bigger than others, obviously, so. Um, and I, and I do like the idea of being involved in. The project or the larger projects. At different, in in different intervals as opposed to just being involved yet.
And the comment was made when we do these dedicated section spotlights, that. All the staffs being involved and that we. We're considerate of the fact of pulling people in, are allowing voices to be heard, so that. That what happened in the smaller um interaction may. Happen a little bit more than we do with the general board meeting.
Why don't we, I mean, I'm, we're out of time, but I I want to circle back with this stat in the next two days, um, that to get. See how they get get more input on what they've heard today, um, I'm. I think what I, what I'm leaning toward hearing is is, you know, we we. We go full steam ahead on on these, these two um ideas here. And again, try to see how they, how they go. Uh, maybe the workshop component is not. Immediately jumped on for for, you know, like May, which is only two months away.
Right.
Um, and then we learn a few things and maybe the, we we revisit that towards the end of the year, towards either. Workshop at that time or programming for the following year, based on how. How things have gone.
I might think having it top of mind, let's go through this year and and think about it. Oh, man, really would have been great to do a workshop about this, or, you know, like, think about, you know, we've kind of set the stage here, we're going to try some things. But if we're all kind of keeping uh an eye on, okay, would this have worked better in a different fo- format? Whether it's that small group workshop or something else.
And I think staff is going to be the one that tells us whether it works or not, sure.
Agreed. Their voice is the most important.
So it'd be lovely to hear from.
Yeah.
Staff, I mean, I know, but I'm also also cognizant of where we are in time here, so.
Um, can I just say a couple of things?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, just two or three, um, I want to acknowledge and appreciate the staff and. Scott's response to the board's desire to be more involved, this is a. Bit of a sea change in how I've seen the meetings run and I'm, I've been personally vocal about this, I really appreciate. Your response to that, um, and also to John's question about the taking up time. So we saw four presentations today, Ann, Chloe, Betty, Steve. Those presentations took time to prepare, I mean, those were. Stuff that they just didn't think about last night and wrote a couple of notes, they took time to prepare. And if what we're doing is we're not doing some of them and doing some other things, then there may be a little time to do those other things when. We don't think they're available. Um, and then lastly, if the board gets more engaged, I know some of us have talked about a. Code of conduct or bylaws for the board and and that kind of thing, maybe that is one of the things the board considers as we move forward. Over time with how we operate internally and and with the staff. Thanks, that's, that's.
Anybody else? When you, do you have a director's report?
I do, I'll make a super quick. Um, staff news, uh, we have new new county planners starting on March twenty fifth, and we still have. What was three of them positions, we don't have four, uh, Troy Woodyard has resigned, um. We've had other opportunities, um, but we'll miss him, uh, so we are, we do have an opening for a principal graphic designer. Uh, work communications is what we're titling it, and. It will change a little bit from his role, but but very, but similar in terms. Not the terms. Um, I hope on the board packet, you noted, hopefully you noticed, uh, uh, this week, this month. We did include a monthly development summary, um, this was a quick version, um, we took our existing reports and then in fact, what we used to email. With summaries of developments and put it all together, uh, let me know at some point if you like that. Um, not a whole lot of extra analysis going into it, but this is something we can produce every month, and I think is a more. Centralized and easier to process or at least read or follow. Um, we would like to integrate just your year to date kind of tracking, which was mentioned at the last meeting, um, but need a little more time here to get that going. Uh, skip over prism, um, we did receive Michael twenty forty grants at the March first deadline. Uh, we've got twenty three applications, uh, about four, four million, slightly over four million. Uh, and we'll be meeting with our committee. That's about, that's, that's about average, you know, what we've gotten, I think our high watermark, we had twenty nine once a year, but.
Last year, I think it was twenty five, so.
Really?
Okay. Slightly below, and uh. Also to note, not a ton of the communities that made that ten percent reduced match cutoff actually applied with the reduced.
But do you think they even?
I separately emailed all of those municipalities and said, please be aware that you qualify for the slower match, we're trying to, you know, change things up and. And give you a a better shot, and so.
Which are a lot of pickable, man.
Maybe there'll be a win. All right, um, the, uh, also, I did, I probably should have said this in our, during our first item, um. But I'll I'll tease a little bit, we we are planning a countywide housing affordability summit, uh, Commissioner Winder is driving this effort. It's uh charged to the planning commission along with housing and redevelopment, uh, put this together. Uh, it's going to be April twenty ninth, uh, which is the very end of uh National Fair Housing Month. Uh, was the main reason for that. Uh, it will be targeted. The audience will be targeted, invitation only, but the uh municipal elected officials, municipal staff. Possibly planning commission members, uh, also though, including especially affordable housing developers. And uh nonprofits involved with it, but we're really trying to hit on the uh elected officials, uh, there was a nonprofit. Summit about a month ago that was very successful, but it was clearly, you know, preaching to the choir, um, which had its place as well, but this. This is intended to be a little different, uh, we have a keynote speaker, uh, a semi well-known figure, uh, Terry Helium. He's based in Harrisburg, but uh was a former NFL player and has been doing a lot of exciting work, um, and. Uh, on this issue and has developed a company as well. Uh, and then we'll have probably likely six breakout sessions, which we're organizing now. Um, covering issues from homelessness and how municipalities deal with that to zoning practices. And legislative needs, uh, most of those will be of a format of a panel type format, uh, with with the. The experts or practitioners that can share their knowledge with my readers. Uh, so stay tuned for that. It will be at Norm.
Norman.
Nothing, well, a hundred percent confirmed, but I think.
We're, you have a prospect.
Yeah. And there'll be a, as of now, there is also expected to be a lunch, uh, serve, but it'll be a morning event. Um, and then. Skip over that. Uh, really, all I need, I was just going to mention some of the event highlights, uh, it was a pretty full month, uh, four, four pages uh this month. Uh, so you had that with you, so I don't think I need to stress too much, other than this Friday. Um, Patty and I will be speaking and updating. Uh, Patsy, the Pennsylvania Association of Zoning Officials with their Montgomery and Bucks County chapter, so uh, talk, talking to them. They want to hear what's what's happening in Montgomery County, but these are zoning officials, so I think we'll have some good discussion as well on zoning, some later. Hot button zoning issues, and then uh Matt and Ann uh will be uh taking their. Uh, representation to the county's legislative delegation meeting, uh, which is a. A renewed effort by upstairs to increase, improve relationships with our legislative officials and. On both sides, work, us work for them, them work for us and get things done, so we'll be talking about transportation. Projects mostly. Yeah, and housing will be there, but Ann will be there supporting as well. Um. That's uh. Good, that's it.
Any party comments? Okay, for a term, thank you.